Good evening. I'd like to call to order the special school board meeting for Seminole County Public Schools for November 9th, 2015. Let the record reflect that all school board members are present. Mrs. Allman is present telephonically. In addition, we have our school board attorney and superintendent present. At this point in time, I'd like to ask Vice Chairman Lockhart to lead us in the pledge.
All right. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, equal liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Dr. Griffin, do you have any agenda modifications?
Yes, I do, Madam Chair. An item for good cause is marked on electronic agenda with a green flag.
Thank you so much. Is there a motion to approve the agenda outline?
So a move?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so very much. This point in our meeting, we'll ask for public comment. I do have a few people who have asked to address the board if there's any additional. There are forms in the back table that you could deliver to our clerk up front. We'd be more than happy to welcome you to the dais. At this point in time, I'll ask Vice Chairman Lockhart to speak about our public input section.
Absolutely. The public input segment of our meeting is provided to allow the public to present specific matters to the board for consideration and referral to the superintendent and staff for inquiry and action, or to address specific items on the agenda. The public input segment of the meeting is not open to presentation of campaign issues by political candidates or others, student disciplinary actions, pending employee disciplinary matters, or pending litigation. It is not the intent of the school board to deprive anyone of their right to freedom of expression. It is, however, the intent of the board to promote mutual respect, civility, and orderly conduct on the part of members of the public appearing before the board. The school board expects positive communication and will not permit disruptive, volatile, hostile, or aggressive communications on the part of speakers. Speakers are limited to three minutes and must clearly identify the matter to be addressed on the speaker's sign-up form. Speakers shall direct their comments only to the board and may not address the audience. Please, if you would, also state your name and address for the record prior to speaking.
Thank you so much. I'd like to first call Stephanie Gresham, and after her comments, then Mr. George Helm.
I'm Stephanie Gresham. I live at 369 Lakewood Court in Lake Mary. I have a sixth grader, a brand-new middle-schooler this year, and she's at Millennium Middle School, and she loves it. She has always been an English learner, an English-brained person. She loves reading and writing. She loves drawing, which is why she's at Millennium. She has never loved math, and she's like me, and she doesn't have the math brain, and she can't wrap her head around numbers. But this year is so different. She's in the main math class. It's not an advanced class. She's taking all other advanced classes, but she's doing great in her math class, and she loves her teacher. She loves the curriculum. I don't even know what it is, because she's doing so great, I never even ask to look at her stuff anymore. But what I'm having a problem with is the nine-week exams that they just took for the first time. It really set her back confidence-wise. Her grades and her quizzes, her test scores that the teacher gives out, she was doing so great. Her homework would always come back, and she felt so confident, and she even felt really confident going into the exams. This was her first big exam-type setting at middle school, and she came home kind of defeated. In fact, in her English Language Arts class, her math class, and her science class, she pretty much bombed all of those exams, even though she had As and Bs on everything else in that class. I was hurting for her, and I decided to poke around a little bit and email the teachers just to ask a little bit more about the tests and if we could see them, if we could, you know, if they were going to be discussed in class so that she could feel a little bit better about maybe the mistakes that she made. Her English Language Arts teacher resigned immediately after the nine-week exam, so I didn't get a chance to speak with her. But her math teacher and I had a good couple of emails back and forth, and I just, I do have them here. I didn't ask him if I could read the email. I just was going to tell you a few things, speaking from the teacher, of her math teacher, about the exams, his opinion about what happened. He curved the exam, and he actually said that she got a C, but he curved it up 25% so that she got an A on it. So it didn't bring her report card grade down, but he said that so many of his students did poorly on it as a whole, and the exam was pretty difficult. We weren't allowed to see the tests, and he didn't have time to go over the wrong answers in the questions that the kids had in class after the tests were graded, and so many did poorly, which was confusing to me. He said that he does agree with the district using a nine-week exam to check the student progress, but the problem is the questions that they put on it.
Thank you, Ms. Gresham. Unfortunately, we're three minutes up, but will you be able to stay for the meeting tonight?
I will, and I actually planned on talking to him and maybe forwarding this emails to you if it was okay with you so that you could see the problems that he had with the test.
We would like to accept that, and I think a lot of your concerns and questions will be discussed this evening. Thanks for your time. George Helm, please, and then Eric Oberson.
My name is George Helm. I live at 6047 Lineal Beach Drive in Apopka, but it is Seminole County, Apopka. I have children at Bear Lake Elementary, Teague Middle School, and at Lake Brantley High School, and I have four girls. I'm here to address the current grade book, the 4.0 scale, and just go through some simple math problems on it, and I'm going to give you an actual factual situation. My daughter, right now, has got an 85 average, her first grade, and on the 3.0 scale, that's a 3.0. Okay? And I do like math, even though I am a practicing attorney. That's very rare, but I do like math. So that's a 3.0. So you'd figure to make that up to a 3.5 average, she would have to get a 4.0 on the current grade book. A 4.0 is 100. Simple math. 185, when you average them together, actually comes out to 92.5, which is not a 90. Now, when you look at the 3.0 schedule again, and you look, the problem is in how they're converted. You take a 95, which is what she would need to get on the 80 to 90 scale to average that 85 to a 90. That 95 is a 3.75 on the 4.0 scale. If you take the 3.75, you add the 3.0 to that, it comes out to a 3.375 average. That's not an A. That's a problem. It's simple math. It's punishing. You know, my daughter actually has to get 100 to average an 85 to a 90, which doesn't make sense. It's simple addition and averaging. So my point is, why? Why are they doing this? It's punishing my kid, potentially, who could get an A at the top, and I don't know why you're doing it, but it doesn't make any sense because it doesn't average out. The conversion doesn't make sense, and maybe they can fix the conversion somehow, but the bottom line is it doesn't work.
Thank you, Mr. Helm. Will you be able to stay for the meeting this evening as well?
Yes.
Okay, because we will be addressing those points. Eric Oberson and Lisa Donovan.
Can I give them paper? Okay. Hello, my name is Eric Oberson. I'm at 3880 Flowering Stream Way in Oviedo. My daughter is in Lawton Child's Middle School, and I wanted to also speak about the grading policy. And I prepared a presentation, actually, and I didn't know if we would be able to show it, so if you get a chance to look at it, I can tell you what page I'm on, but basically, I wanted to address a similar concern, and for the sake of brevity, if you switch to page three in the presentation in the lower right corner, the way that this grading policy is set up, it's not a linear scale anymore, and there's two inflection points in it, and it creates a problem. And it does two different things. It helps elevate the lower grades, and the main benefit really is just compressing the F scale. But on the upper end, it has a detrimental effect to the As and Bs. And if you switch to the next page, page four, I did a simulation, a Monte Carlo simulation, statistics, and sampled grades for a student in a range of plus and minus 10 from their normal point, grade-point average. And based on the simulation, you can see an effect, and if you switch to the page five, you'll see the effect on the upper end of the grade scale in the lower right corner. And as the previous man was pointing out, for instance, at a grade-point average of 90, the previous grading policy would have been an A, and now with the quality point system, it's going to be a grade-point average of 3.3. And so that's a significant change. It goes from what would be a 3.5 to a 3.3 for a student. This is very discouraging to the students, and it's discouraging to the parents, and I guess ultimately, you know, I'm here to try to understand why that change was made, why it was just made for the middle school. If you look on the last page, and how was this determined, and was the impact of this grading scale really considered on the higher-grade, grade-point-average students? And if it's not justified somehow, which it may be, and I would like to understand that, then I would request that we would somehow revert to the old system.
Thank you so much for your input.
And I will be here for the meeting.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And board members, if I could remind all of us and the speakers, we do have people joining our board meeting via the telephone, and it's hard for them to hear if we don't speak right into the mic, so just as a reminder. Thank you so very much. Lisa Donovan, please.
Do you want to hand that to them? You would like, okay. Lisa Donovan. I sent this to you in an email, but not till about an hour ago, because I was unaware of the meeting, so in case you have not yet received it, that has a copy of what I sent. Basically, to echo what has already been stated, I think those are excellent points. I didn't run a statistical analysis, although I'm sure that it actually points to the validity of some of these same arguments. My concerns are threefold as it relates to the middle school grading. The most important priority that I see relates to the high school-level courses students are taking in middle school, because as we all know, those go on there. Permanent transcripts calculate their overall GPA and so forth. If we put those top students in a situation where they are essentially penalized for taking a high school-level course in middle school by making it more difficult for them to achieve a score that reflects the effort, time, and the teaching that they receive, then it does a disservice to all of them. What I would like to propose for that is that you exclude high school-level courses, first and foremost, from this entire grading approach, so that it's graded in an equivalent way to the high school students. Otherwise, why take them in middle school? You could do better to take it virtually or to wait, and that doesn't do anything to benefit the students that are stronger in certain subject areas. My second concern is, of course, the same as everyone else, which is that for all courses, it'd be just the same to get an A, as a B, as a C, and so forth. And I understand the concerns the board has had about trying to sort of give someone a second chance, if you will, if they achieve a low score, but there are other ways to accomplish it besides squeezing the top end of the scale. As it relates to that, the third point in my email relates to this new approach of allowing sort of these retakes at the teacher's discretion when a bar is set at a certain grade level, where they could say, anyone who scored a C or below gets a retake, a D or below gets a retake. What has happened, and I give you a couple of specific examples in there that have actually come to pass so far this year, are students are getting a B who got extra help, studied, prepared in time, got a B, great job, that's a good grade. Student got a D, didn't prepare, blew it off, whatever, maybe wasn't prepared well by the teacher, who knows the reason, was allowed to retake it. Not the B student, but the D student was. The D student winds up with an A. Now their grade is an A. The student that prepared on time still has a B. That's actually happening. There's a couple of examples in there. There have been others as well. So those are my three areas of concern related to the new grading policy. I think it needs to be equivalent. I think any high school course should be marked the same no matter where and when you take it, and I think that the retake policy needs to be readjusted again. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your input. Any other speakers? Okay. Seeing none at this point in time. Dr. Griffin, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, I do. Board members and also for the audience, there's really two pieces to this meeting this evening. The very first part of this meeting is talking really about school grades. That's the accountability system that the state sets forth, and I'm sure everybody understands that, and we have an action item with that. And then the addendum item that I added talks about middle school grading, so I hope that all of you that spoke do stay back to participate in that. I have a recommendation related to the first item, that the School Board of Seminole County approve the letter to the governor, the State Board of Education, and the Florida Commission of Education regarding concerns with proposed school grade calculations.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Okay. What I'd like to do now is have some of our team members come up and present to us so we can enter into dialogue before we vote on this motion. Thank you, Dr. Cody.
Thank you. So the board just received the letter, correct? Okay, thank you.
And I'd like to remind you again to speak loud into the microphones. We have two people joining us via the telephone. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Calderon. Board members, I know you've been very much aware of the school accountability rule workshops that the department has held, and several of you have attended many of those work sessions. We would like to share with you and with our public the unintended consequences, we hope, for applying some of these rules for the 2014-15 school grades. In addition, we are very concerned about recommendations for the 15-16 school grades, and so it's important for us to talk about that information and then provide feedback to the State Board by tomorrow. That's the close of the feedback period, November 10th. So Kelly's going to start with the overview of the 14-15 school grade calculation process.
Good evening, board members. We're going to start out by talking about just an overview of the school grades and accountability model, and then we'll talk specifically about the components that will be utilized to determine the 14-15 school grade, and then we'll take a look at what will be added for the 15-16 process as we go through. The first slide in the presentation details the changes in the school grading system that were requested by the governor in his accountability summit in 2013, specifically that we look towards promoting a system that has a little bit more clarity and is driven by transparency and improvement in student outcomes. The new model refocuses the grading formula on achievement, learning gains, graduation, earning college credit and industry certification, while it continues to maintain a focus on students who need the most support within our system.
If you could move that mic closer to you, you can pull it, that'd be great. Thank you.
There we go. Just a reminder that the new grade modeling system eliminates the bonus factors and additional weighting that were often confusing for schools and the public. It also removes the letter grade penalties that were sometimes associated with certain components, so those are no longer included in the model. The model is set up to report on all school grades as components, as percentages, each worth 100 points, with the grades based on a percentage of points earned rather than a total point system.
The new rule also changes when English language learners are included in the school grade calculation. ELLs will be included in the achievement component after two years, and the first years the ELLs are in a US school, they will take either an ELL assessment or the FSA assessment, and that first score will be used in their learning gain calculation in the next year when they have two years of scores. If they choose to take the ELL assessment, their FSA assessment will be linked back to that ELL assessment. The DOE has not developed a methodology for this and has not shared any information.
Can I stop you right there? I'm sorry, because I think what you just said is very important, if I understood it. So DOE has said that we're going to wait for two years, but we're going to use the data of however you scored in your first year, when you were here, your first year ever being in this country and being a non-English speaker. Even if you, by the time you're done with your second year, you're speaking fluently and you are doing great, we're still going to use that first-year calculation, which will essentially decrease that. Am I underst-
You're correct. They will be using the first-year score, but it may not decrease anything in the second year, because it's going to be used in the learning gain component. So if they scored relatively low in the first year and scored relatively higher in the second year, then it will be shown that they made a gain in the next year.
So they're only using the first year to calculate a learning gain?
Correct.
Not the proficiency of that?
Yes.
Got it. Thank you.
But they haven't created the crosswalk yet from the ELL exam to the FSA exam.
Correct.
And when is that supposed to occur?
They did not provide any information about that.
Hmm, surprising.
The next slide describes the school grading components that will be used in the proposed rule. Achievement is the first one, which has the ELA assessment, the math assessment, the science assessment, and the social studies assessment. Each of these are worth 100 points. Next is learning gains, the ELA assessment and the math assessment, and then learning gains of the lowest 25 on the ELA and the math assessment. Also included is middle school acceleration, which is 100 points, graduation rate in college and career readiness. As we go through the presentation, we're going to talk in detail about each one of these components.
Could you pull that mic closer to you, please?
Yes, sorry.
Thank you.
Schools are only going to be graded on the components for which they have enough data. So as long as a school has 10 students for each component, the component will be included in the school grade calculation. If school does not have enough data for one or more components, they will still receive a grade, and that component will just be subtracted from their total points. So if they are missing their science, it will be subtract, 100 points will be taken out, and their denominator would be adjusted appropriately.
So if you only have nine ELLs in your school?
This is for any assessment, so if, so say you only had nine students who took the science exam, and that component wouldn't be included. So if you were in elementary school and you had 12 students take the ELA test and 15 take the math test, and only nine take the science, the science component would be taken out of your total points, and the percentage would be based on the grade removing the science. Does that make sense?
We're going to transition now to having some specific conversation about 14-15 school grades and how they will be configured. So for the 14-15 school grade, it will include only the achievement scores that we just reviewed, acceleration for middle school and high school, and the graduation component for high school only. So the learning gains will not be included in the 14-15 school grade calculation.
And board members, this slide is the specific reason that FAD is requesting that grades be A for the year or held in abeyance, because without learning gains, the algorithm is lacking over 50% of the total number of points that we're accustomed to earning.
So what would they consider? Why would they not consider learning gains? I guess is the way I need to put it.
Because there's not two years of FSA data to calculate that gain upon, they just remove learning gains from the calculation methodology for 14-15. So until there are two years of FSA scores used to calculate the gain, there is not going to be a learning gain calculation take place.
I understand that, so maybe that would be a reason not to use the scores for a grade this year. What do you think?
I certainly understand your point.
Well, and that's my concern with the ELL, too, because they don't have the crosswalk, and so if you're taking the ELL test one year and the FSA the next year, we don't really know if you're measuring a good, quality, statistically valid, learning gain, because you're just picking out numbers, and to me, that's not acceptable. It's got to be apples to apples, not apples to oranges.
Interesting. So for 14-15, the achievement component, well, you're eligible to earn 100 points in English Language Arts in achievement, 100 points in mathematics, 100 points in science, 100 points in social studies, 100 points for middle school acceleration, 100 points for graduation rate at high school, and 100 points for college and career acceleration at the high school level. Those are the total points that can be earned for 14-15. This slide details the assessments that are utilized to calculate that achievement score. The percentage of full-year enrolled students who scored a Level III or above in these assessments will be used to calculate those achievement levels that we just reviewed. This slide recaps some of the discussion that took place at the state board meeting. I'm sorry.
One second.
It was just going to be snarky. It's okay. Go ahead.
Okay. This slide just kind of recaps some discussion that took place at the State Board of Education meeting, as there was a conversation about setting the proficiency scores, and we tried to capture some of that information that was shared. As we're aware, the commissioner has released the proposed achievement levels cut scores for all the new FSA and EOC tests. The commissioner's cut points will result in approximately about a 50% proficiency rate across these exams. The state board at their recent meeting reviewed those cut points and asked Florida Department of Education to provide some proficiency cut points that are closer to the NAP outcomes. Those proficiency cut scores will result in approximately 60 to 70% of our students as being labeled as non-proficient. Commissioner Stewart and Deputy Commissioner Juan Copa had some conversation about the proficiency setting process with the state board, and said that as they outlined it, it adhered to the industry standards, and clarified to the state board when asked that a Level III is representative of a C grade during that conversation. The commissioner agreed that they will provide, they requested NAP data at the December State Board meeting for further consideration.
If I could hold you off just one second. Board members, Vice Chairman Lockhart and I were fortunate enough to attend that entire meeting, and I'm glad I double-dosed on my high blood pressure meds that day. This, what is really disturbing to me is that we're tying any of this to NAP, because the reason that the state board and legislators are telling us that the Sunshine Solution is not a solution is because tests such as SAT and Iowa are aligned to Common Core, not aligned to Florida standards. If it's good for that reasoning, I don't know why we're coming back to NAP, which is aligned to Common Core, not Florida standards. So you're assessing on standards that supposedly we don't need to assess on, plus, not every student takes NAP, so you're taking a smaller percentage and making large, general decisions on that. And our children are important, every single child, not just some, and when you just are taking generic numbers and scores and putting them on the backs of every 66,800 SCP students, I think is criminal. And that's why this letter, and when we get into further discussion, I think a lot more has to be addressed, because I know, Vice Chairman, you even met with Ms. Johnson after that meeting, and I almost feel like this entire PowerPoint needs to be presented to every board member and the state. They're making very important decisions that are very high stakes for our students, for our teachers, and our communities, and I'm not so sure they have the level of understanding of everybody that's sitting up here. of everybody that's sitting up here tonight. Member Schaffner and then Member Lockhart.
I have a question, Kelly. The third bullet point there, it says, the last sentence, "This will result in 60% to 70% of our students being labeled non-proficient." Our, meaning statewide, Seminole County?
As we looked at that, we looked at how that would relate to Seminole County students.
So this is not necessarily statewide?
No, ma'am. It's very difficult to take a look at the NAEP data as it is and even kind of try to do a projection with that because as Ms. Calderon said, it's such a small cross-section of students, it's not taken at every grade level. I know the State Board asked for additional information from the commissioner on how other states have set their cut scores, wanting to bring back that methodology as well to so that they could take a look at that process.
So would your guess be that it would be the same, 60%, 70%? Or keeping in mind that Seminole County is a high-performing school district?
We would probably be closer to 60 than 70, but it's a significant impact on our students who have a pretty high rate of proficiency, have had on the FCAT 2.0, and we think will continue to have on FSA.
And I'm looking at the statewide effect. So if it's 60% in Seminole...
Definitely over 70, I would assume, for the state.
So if I'm a business and I'm thinking about moving my national headquarters, why would I want to come to Florida when we've got a 60%, 70%, 60% to 70% of our students being labeled non-proficient? That's not fair to our kids. That's not fair to our teachers. And it's not fair to our communities. I know I'm preaching to the choir, but I'm kidding.
Vice Chairman Lockhart.
Part of that discussion that I think was very interesting was to hear the six, now there are seven State Board members, but at the time of that meeting, there were six, was to hear them discuss the definition of proficient. I think that they're actually debating among themselves whether or not the word proficient is being used too widely. Proficient, in their minds, really doesn't mean sufficient. And that perhaps they're even talking about completely realigning how they even use those terms. So some of the discussion and some of the board members' parts, I think, was much more, I don't want to use the word radical, but it was very aggressive, thank you, as compared to some others. I don't think that the entire State Board was necessarily of the same mind to do this. I think there were a couple in particular that were kind of driving that discussion. And I was pleased that, in talking with Chairman Johnson, she was very open to understanding a little bit more about what NAEP really is and what it does and how it works. And I would agree. I don't think there is a broad understanding among them. I think what they're trying to do is they're trying to actually to do exactly what we're trying to do, which is to find a national benchmark that we can compare ourselves against in a fair way. And that is exactly what we're saying, is let's find a nationally-normed, well-respected test that we can give our students and compare ourselves to kids in Iowa or New Hampshire or wherever. NAEP can't do that because it doesn't give us that granular data. I don't believe that the majority of the State Board members recognize that. And so for us, as we talk later about this letter, I think while it's important that we keep it brief, I think it also has to have some educational components in it because just saying that we don't want it aligned to NAEP and not explaining why, someone else is going to fill in those blanks for them. And I don't know that they'll necessarily be filled in accurately. I'd rather have us speak on our own behalf than let someone at DOE speak for us. And now I'm going to be quiet.
I absolutely agree. Mr. Bauer, any comments? Mrs. Allmand, any comments? Guess not. Okay. Okay. Thanks, Kelly.
Calderon?
Yes.
Are you speaking to me?
Yes, ma'am. Do you have any comments at this?
I don't know what you said. Very poor connection here.
Okay. Just jump in if you have any additional comments at any time.
Okay. I'm following the PowerPoint.
Thank you.
Dr. Calderon, I'm Ms. Lockhart. At the meeting, did anyone on the DOE Board ask DOE to run a simulation of what the grades would look like under proposed scores?
No, but I was going to ask you to do that tonight for us. I really don't think they have a good concept of how devastating this could potentially be. Most of the quotes were circled around, "We don't want to misrepresent to our parents and community that these children, when they leave us, are ready to compete," and what they kept saying, "the global society, the global society." And they felt we would be lying to them if we didn't increase the cut scores to make them be the top of the world coming from Florida. The timing of that board meeting was poor in that the results were released that morning of fourth grade, wasn't it, fourth grade reading? And we showed that our students were at the bottom of the country. And it's unacceptable to them. It's unacceptable to us. But again, I want to get down to the granular level to every single student. And I don't think there's a college in the world that asks for NAEP scores. They're asking for SAT. I don't think there's private schools. If I was a parent and I was going to ask for test scores to choose where to send my child, they're not testing with NAEP on an annual basis. It's every other year, and it's not the entire school's population. So if we are going to make any comparisons, I think it has to be to something valid and reliable. But if I'm even going to step back further, I'm still not convinced FSA is valid and reliable. So we're taking something that's not valid and reliable, comparing it to something that's not accurate from data, and we're convoluting the numbers to make who knows what. We're going to look like laughingstocks, quite frankly, I think, at the end of the day. And I think it's, we're in the education business, and I agree with Vice Chairman Lockhart that I think there's a lot of education to do, and it behooves us at this point in time, whether it be this letter or follow-up meetings. But we seem to understand it, but I think some of the other decision-makers don't.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to move on to discuss some other changes in the banking of middle school scores for high school grades. So in the previous school grade models, the scores of the middle school students who are into Level III or above in a high school EOC were banked for use in the high school's achievement component upon the student's enrollment in high school. So they were used in middle school when they earned the score, and then they were also used again when the student entered high school. The proposed school grade rule does not include the banking of proficient EOC scores earned in middle school for use in high school. This may result in some significant negative impacts on high school grades, and we recommend that the current methodology used for banking EOC scores for the inclusion in high school grade continues. We're going to show you some data that shows how this may impact scores.
I think this is another good point to bring up. I think it was eighth-grade math scores that came out the morning of the State Board meeting. And one of the things that was very weighing on the mind of one of the members in particular was the fact that our eighth-grade math scores were so terribly low, and he just kept pounding that. And it was fascinating to, there was an epiphany at some point on the part of one of the public speakers who got up and basically, I think-
It was me.
It was Dr. Calderon. Yeah, one of those public speakers did a great job. And she reminded the State Board members, or perhaps told them for the first time, the majority of eighth graders in our public school district take Algebra I or geometry. They are not included in that eighth-grade math calculation. And the fact that that very important-
Nugget.
Nugget was left out of that, I think, is very significant. And it falls right in line with this in that leaving that piece out is absolutely ridiculous.
Well, it penalizes high-achieving students and teachers, and that's what we have in Seminole County. So you're dug into a hole so deep, there's no way you can get out of it based on the parameters that they're giving us. So we're disenfranchised for rewarding good behavior.
Okay. So looking at the chart, if you, we're just going to use Seminole High School as an example, and you can follow along. If you look in the 2014-15 Algebra I, the number of test takers was approximately 400, and the number that passed, and this is using the commissioner's proposed cut points. So this is all an estimate, theoretical. It's not the school grade. It's, you know, I just want to keep that in mind for everyone. So this is based on the commissioner's proposed cut points. So in Seminole High School, for Algebra I, about 45% of the students who took the test passed. If you follow across, for geometry, about 54% of students passed. In Algebra II, about 45% of students passed. For the school grade component, all three of these exams are aggregated together to produce the percent pass for total math, which would be about 48%. If you look at the next column over, the actual 13-14 math grade, this was the actual number of points that Seminole High School earned in the 13-14 math grade component, which was 79 points. You look, the difference between these two numbers is 31. So our school grade potentially theoretically could decrease, the math component could decrease from 79 to 48, which is a 31-point drop. Now, this shows you that what the impact of the cut scores and the new standards in FSA assessment, as well as the impact of not banking. The next column over will show you the impact of just the cut scores in the standards we're taking into account banking. So if you go to the chart below and you go down to Seminole, this is a 13-14% proficient without-bank scores. So in 13-14, Seminole High School had about a 52% proficiency rate in Algebra I and a 72% proficiency rate in geometry. Algebra II did not exist at this time, so there's only two components. So their total math for 13-14 without-bank scores is 65. If you go back up to the first chart, you'll see the 65 and then the decrease. So from the decrease is from the 14-15 total math and the 13-14 estimated percent proficiency without-bank scores. That's about a 17% decrease. So you can see that the bank scores add, depending on the school, between a five and 10 more points the schools will be losing if we do not bank scores. Is there any questions?
The next slides focus on the middle school acceleration component of the 14-15 grades. So the calculation for middle school acceleration includes the percentage of eligible students who passed one or more high school-level EOC courses or attained industry certification. So the denominator for this calculation would include full-year enrolled eighth-grade students who scored at or above Achievement Level III on the FSA Math or FSA English Language Arts in their prior year. So their seventh-grade scores would be, are what puts them in this denominator. Or also included are full-year enrolled students in grades six, seven, and eight that took a high school-level EOC assessment or industry cert. A student is included in the calculation no more than once. So if the student is taking Algebra I and also taking Biology, they only appear in the calculation once. You only get credit for them one time, even if they're taking multiple EOC-related courses or industry certifications.
Dr. Cody, if I could just, you might not have this data at this point in time because we've just made such a district-wide push this year of increasing industry certifications in middle school, you know, increasing the accelerated math. And we see it when we walk through the elementary schools, how they're being more prepared for the higher achieving. I mean, that's what's right for kids. But this, what percentage of our students could potentially be taken out of the mix on this?
Well, as Kelly said, every student is counted-
Once.
Once. So it's really the duplicated number of courses that students would take at the middle school level. So you might have a student taking Algebra I and Biology, but they're only going to count one time in that denominator. And that is part of, I believe, the State Board's efforts to reduce any of the additional points that were available to us previously. So they've taken away that methodology for extra points because students have extra advanced coursework.
Because I almost envision a day that every middle schooler in this district would either be sitting for an industry certification and/or an Algebra I, a geometry, a biology. And to me, where it's almost counted against us that we're offering so many choices to our students.
I think the Board's been very clear that our offerings are based on our students and not on this formula. But it is important for the public to understand the formula that we're dealing with and then how it's being used to represent our schools.
And therein lies the opportunity because this isn't a 30-second soundbite on a news station. I mean, these are long conversations over many meetings, times, communications in many different formats for families to understand because not everybody has an education background. And as you said, Dr. Cody, this truly is a community issue, whether you have children in the schools or not. And we have our work cut out for us, I think, board members.
With regards to middle school acceleration, one of the elements of the calculation that is concerning, middle school students who are scoring a Level III or above in English Language Arts have very limited acceleration opportunities available for them. So if your student scored a Level II on math but scored a Level III in English Language Arts, because that student scored a Level III in English Language Arts, they're in the denominator. We don't have English Language Arts courses with end-of-course exams that will allow that student to demonstrate mastery or acceleration. Most of our industry certifications are geared towards mathematics, computer science, STEM areas, rather than English Language Arts. So we're kind of concerned that the inclusion of these students in the denominator with very limited options will impact the opportunity for those students to earn points in this component. So our recommendation is that we limit this to only students who are scoring a Level III or above in math be included in the denominator because of the acceleration opportunities that exist in that area. The next thing we'll talk about is the graduation rate component. And moving forward, high school grades will be released at the same time as the other instructional levels. Typically, we would have to have waited until December to have the grad rate in discussion and have the grad rate component added in. So in order to meet this new timeline, that means that the data for the high school graduation component will need to be lagged by a year. So what that means is for the 14-15 school grade, the graduation rate component will use the 13-14 grad rate.
That's criminal.
Students are gone.
So, and so, you know, so that means then for 15-16, the 15-16 school grade would then use the 14-15 grad rate. So that component will always be lagged a year so that we can release school grades at the same time for high school as we release them for elementary and middle.
That doesn't even make sense.
So, so where is this coming from? Can we peel back the layers of the onion and figure out where this came from and how it actually wound up in rule? Because this is rule, correct, not statute? Am I correct?
Rule.
Okay. So someone who is not elected or accountable to any voters in the state of Florida created a rule that makes no sense, and we are now going to have to bear the consequences of it. And was that rule, do you codify rules? I don't know. Was this rule-
It was approved by the State Board.
By the State Board?
Now, and what they are referring to is the proposed rule. Now, and what they are referring to is the proposed rule moving forward, and we're there in the development process.
But someone thought this was a good idea to propose.
And that someone is another.
But who, who would've thought of this?
Am I, am I, I mean, is that, 'cause I'm, I'm kinda like trying to get to the root of how we got here.
Would've been recommended by the DOE, right?
Well, I, I think, you know, if, if you go back to how we started with the governor's summit on accountability and transparency and wanting to simplify the system, the fact, I think, in those discussions, there was a lot of conversation about having to wait, um, from June to December for high school grades to be configured, because the grad rate process, it, it's not, it's not immediate. You have to have time to process that data so that that rate is accurate for students, um, and for schools. So that delay was problematic at that point. So as they looked at, um, drafting the language to update the model, it was, I, I think on their mind, it was a goal that we release the rates, the, the school grades at the same time.
Well, bad data is worse than waiting.
So, you know, in, in order to do that, there's no way to release a high school grade in June when we're just graduating kids the last week in May, the first part of June, and have a finished and completed grade. So this was the, this was the solution that was available, to have a consistent release of scores in a timely manner. I'm not saying it's the greatest option available, but if you're going to include a grad rate component for high schools, the data has to be available to configure the.
Why does it have to be available in June?
I, I.
I mean, we've gone how many years now with it being available in December?
You're, you're correct.
So was there an issue with that?
I think that was looked at as something that want, they wanted to correct as part of that kind of transparency simplified system.
So it was the reactor panels that they had around the state gave this input?
I don't think so. This was really based on looking at Senate Bill sixteen forty-two that really built the new model, along with the governor's accountability summits and what changes needed to be made to the model. Um, so that was really the conversation that kind of swirled around this topic, was the delayed release and everybody else's scores were out in June, and the high schools were always having to wait until December to get a grad rate from six months ago. And I think they were trying to, um, better align the release of the grades. That was the intent. Um, but as long as you have this data component in it, um, I guess the other option would be to hold the other grades until you had this.
Right.
I mean, I'm, again, I, I can't speak to what their, their thought processes were at those discussions, but at the time sixteen forty-two, um, came into being, that re, that kind of realigned the model, and all those conversations were going on, there was a lot of conversation about timing that has resulted in this piece. The next piece, um, of the model is the college and career acceleration, and like the prior slide, this also is based on a lagged data component, because it looks at students earning college credit on AP, IB, or a C in dual enrollment or Cape Industry Certification. Um, so for the fourteen-fifteen college and career acceleration denominator will be based on the standard diploma graduates from the class of thirteen four, from that thirteen-fourteen graduation cohort. Again, this is another element that's lagged data because it was always a pending piece as we moved forward, because it was based on graduation and getting the test results back for AP, IB, dual enrollment courses and industry certification. So this is yet another lagged component.
Dr. Blazewig, has it ever been a, a problem for us to have grades in high schools come out in December?
It hasn't been a problem for us. Eh, the first year that it happened, uh, that high school grades, when graduation rate first was introduced into the accountability plan, it, it was unusual for us because, uh, our parents were asking, grades were released, why weren't high school grades released? But after that first year, it just became widely understood that that was the way it was, and, and the reason for it.
So how many years have we done it now in December?
Six, seven?
So are we changing it just 'cause we wanna say we've changed it, or?
Well, I, I, I was just texting that I recall when this was first introduced publicly, and it was by Commissioner Stewart at the state board meeting in Orlando, and Dr. Calderon, you and I were at that meeting. That was the first time, and it got quite a reaction. I mean, they were there to discuss Common Core and some other things were the primary topic, but this was first introduced as, uh, a possible solution to the timing of the release of school grades at that state board meeting, uh, more than a year ago in Orlando. And I remember the superintendent from Dade County, uh, put in a public, uh, speaking form to speak specifically to, to topics. One was proficiency, uh, grading on proficiency only, and the other was, um, this particular, um, component, which is using lagging data, data to, uh, account for school grades for students who have been gone out of our system for more than a year.
Well, I can understand why they need to include graduation rate, 'cause that's important, very important. But if it's been working for six or seven years, why are we changing it now?
I, I think.
What is the point?
Ms. Thompson, I think, uh, said that, and, and I think I agree with her reasoning, that it was simply to unify the release of school grades at the same time.
So what's more important, accurate data or unifying the school grades at all the same time? Sorry.
Okay, uh, now we're just gonna discuss, um, how the school grades are actually calculated and go through the model for each, um, level. So the school's grade is determined by summing the points earned for each component. Each component is worth a hundred points, and dividing the sum by the twelve points available for all components with sufficient data. Uh, the percentage resulting is the percentage of points the school earned, um, from all applicable components. And this percentage would be compared to a scale set by the State Board of Education to determine the school's grade, and we will discuss that as well. The first model shows you, um, what school grades will be based on in fourteen-fifteen for elementary school. Elementary school grades will be based on three components. Please remember that learning gains are not included. So elementary schools will be based on perfect achievement in ELA, achievement in math, and achievement in science. It's a total of three hundred points. Middle school grades will be based on five components. Again, learning gains are not included. The components are English Language Arts, math, science, social studies, which is the civics EOC exam, and the acceleration, um, success, which we just discussed. High school grades, uh, will, in fourteen-fifteen, will be based on six components. Uh, learning gains are not included again. Those components are ELA, math, science, which is the Biology I EOC, social studies, which is the US History EOC. And then we have, um, the two in green are indicate lag data. That's a graduation rate, which is just a four-year overall graduation rate, and then the acceleration, uh, success, which we just discussed. Schools will also be, or districts will also be receiving a grade, um, based on all components in the school grade model. Um, students who were not a full year, full year enrolled in a school, but were full year enrolled in the district will be included in the district's grade addition, in addition to the students included in school grades. Um, the district model is based on, um, a maximum of six components. Learning gains aren't con, included this year in fourteen-fifteen. Um, and those components are ELA, math, science, social studies, the graduation rate, and the acceleration, um, success in high school and middle school.
Support members, this is very important, because in addition to having school grades lower than our communities accustomed to, this will also could possibly have an impact on our district grade.
Well, and Dr. Griffin, when we talk about school grades, we've had discussions with a lot of our SAC committees this year as well. And we know they take their jobs very seriously, especially if they have the A letter grade and they get the bonuses and choose how to distribute those bonuses. I'm not an attorney, which I know our attorney's glad I'm not, but from a legal standpoint, it sounds to me that you're not giving a valid grade if you're using data from the prior year to choose how to give bonuses to staff this year. So I'm just curious how they're melding with the school accountability system. We've been fortunate, because of the great teaching and learning in this district, that we get a lot of our teachers and employees get those bonuses each year. But if you're not tying it totally to students that they've touched that year, I think it's giving a disingenuous letter grade.
Okay, um.
Who's gonna get the bonus? Will it be the thirteen-fourteen or the fourteen-fifteen?
Well, you'd have to split hairs, because part of the grade is thirteen-fourteen and part of the grade is fourteen-fifteen.
See all kinds of issues coming out of that. Especially when money's involved.
The new school model, um, requires the state board to reset the grading scale, um, to avoid the compression of the current scale. Um, they created the rule that there, there must be at least five percentage points separating the, uh, percentage thresholds needed to earn each school grade, and I'll review that in a second. Um, the state board must also periodically review the scale to determine whether the expectations should be raised to encourage the increased student achievement. And if the state board adjusts the grading scale upward, it must inform the public and school district of the reasons for the adjustment and the anticipated impact on school grades. Uh, this slide shows you what the current, um, that would be thirteen-fourteen and prior school grade scale, um, for each letter grade was. So for example, the issue that they're referring to, if you look at, um, great, the grade of a B, it's from sixty-two to sixty-five, that's only three points. They want at least five points in that range to even it out. Because some of the other components, one has seven, one has, you know, it, they wanna make sure it's even. Um, the new scale has not been set yet. Um, the DOE is providing recommendations to the state board to discuss in December, um, and it's likely to be approved in January, January with the proficiency scores. Um, the state board is, um, supposed to, uh, consider three things when they're setting the scale. The first one is what percentage a student should be passing state assessments at an A school or at an average C school? What percentage of students should be graduating in an A school or an average C school? And finally, um, when learning gain data become available in fifteen-sixteen, what are the percentages of students that should be making gains at an A school and an average C school? This last bullet is kind of important, because they will not be able to consider that component until fifteen-sixteen, but they're setting grades, um, this, for this year for the fourteen-fifteen grades.
This, this slide is, contains a statutory reference in language that reclassifies the grades as informational for fourteen-fifteen. Um, so you'll see that it, because this is supposed to be their baseline, the schools work towards improved performance, um, moving forward. This slide captures, um, DOE's interpretation of being held harmless by informational grades, so it talks about no interruption of support to underperforming schools and schools, and the turnaround options won't be enforced based on fourteen-fifteen, um, grades. Um, the Florida School Recognition Program continues, um, which would be the conversation you were having previously for qualifying schools, um, that meet that definition based on the fourteen-fifteen grades. So once the grades are released, the appeals processes that have been in place, um, are still there. We have thirty days after preliminary calculation to appeal a school's grade. Um, this, in this language, if a school's percent tested is less than ninety-five percent, um, the superintendent can appeal to the department to calculate a grade for the school if the superintendent can demonstrate that the student performance data accurately represents the progress of the school. Um, if a school district determines that a different grade should be assigned to a school because of a data correction or omission of data or miscalculation, um, the school's grade can be appealed based upon those grounds.
Ms. Beaman, can we appeal all our grades? Because if we don't feel they're using the correct data to give an accurate reflection.
The, the current rule, and, and I believe that the language is mirrored in the proposed rule, sets forth the, eh, the reasons for an appeal. And based on the information I have right now, wouldn't recommend, uh, uh, just a, across-the-board appeal of all grades based on, on what I have right now.
Would or would not? Imagine statewide.
Well, 'cause maybe we just appeal every letter grade that's not an A. We'll take the A even if it's bad data, but if we're trying to make it a point.
These schools, are they in the state of Florida? I forgot.
I'm not gonna make up the number. I, I wanna say in the, in the three thousand range, but I don't.
And gosh, that's a lot of appeals.
No, it's, it's sixty.
And while you're looking that up, who are we appealing to? Or to whom are we appealing? Are, are we appealing to the state board? Are we appealing to DO, staffers at DOE?
Uh, staff, staff at DOE, where you, when you do an appeal, you have to process and present evidence of, um, if it was, we recently did one, um, this past year on a data miscalculation that resulted in a grade change for one of our high schools, and we had to, um, amass proof of the, um, the data, the incorrect data that was processed by the state, though it was submitted correctly by, um, the school and the district, and we provide that to them. And then the assessment accountability staff reviews those appeals and then, um, makes a recommendation then to the commissioner based upon that information.
And what grade was that school given during the appeal process?
They were given a grade of I incomplete.
Incomplete.
An I.
So an I can be given by DOE to a Florida school?
During, during the appeal process, that's the.
That's the caveat. We understand.
And, and the current language and the, the current rule is that after the initial issuance of school grades, the school district shall have at least thirty days to review the data on which the school grade was based. If the school district determines that a different school grade should be assigned because of the omission of student data, a data miscalculation, or special circumstances that might have affected the grade assigned, a request for state review can be submitted.
Well, it's data miscalculation, in my opinion, if they're using information from different year assessments.
It's their guidelines, though.
Right, well, that's what they're saying. I mean, if you're asking them, it's really having the rooster watch the hen house, because we're appealing to the same body who made up the rules.
That's why, that's why any appeal to, to the DOE is gonna be DOE.
Well said.
But wouldn't it be fun in the process?
They'd have to at least pretend to listen.
I think that ninety-five percent number is interesting. I think it's fascinating that it's ninety-five percent when that's the same percent that the, um, federal DOE gives the state for their, um, reimbursement for federal funds.
And, and I was wondering, Ms. Hawkheart, if we had a school that tested less than ninety-five percent of their students, and I did not appeal to the department, what grade would they give that school?
I was wondering that as well.
'Cause I think we're seeing that nationwide in some of the discussions we've had. There are certain states, that, New York, I think, was mentioned, if I'm not correct, Dr. Griffin, that there's a lot of students not sitting for the exam. So if nobody makes that threshold, then what? And, and my concern is, if we still have in rule, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Beaman, but a student in order to get a diploma in the state of Florida must pass the tenth grade exam or a concordant test, and if the student doesn't sit for any, then what happens?
Going, going forward, not this year?
Yeah, going forward.
If the student doesn't sit, the, there's a concordance score that the student can achieve in order to meet that requirement.
If they sit for the other exams either. But if they're not gonna sit for any, then even though they could be a straight A student. even though they could be a straight A student, are we allowed to give them a Seminole County Public Schools diploma?
If they don't meet any of the requirements under the statute, no.
Is it currently set up that a student must first take the FSA in order to qualify to use a concordant score? Or could a concordant score exist parallel, I mean, if you wanted to, why the word prophylactically is coming to mind, but if you wanted to go ahead and give your kid, have your child take the, is it PSAT that's the concordant score for...
The SAT or the ACT.
The SAT or the ACT, that's your concordant score for that tenth grade exam. If they had that score, would you not be able to automatically use that? Or would they also have to sit in order to use that, sit for the FSA in order to use that score?
So, they're required to sit for the FSA at least once prior to using the concordant score. So, if you have the concordant score and it's in the student's test history, before it can be applied to meet the graduation requirement, the student must first attempt the tenth grade FSA ELA assessment.
Attempt the whole test?
The student must take the test, yes.
And not that long ago, they had to sit for three?
Yes. Yes, they used to have to try multiple times.
They had to fail three times before you could use a concordant score.
Really?
They reduced it to one?
Oh, that was gracious. Okay. All right. I'm with you. I think we're thinking creatively over here in a way that I know makes you nervous.
Very nervous.
But, well, I'm sorry. Go.
Yeah.
This concludes the portion of the presentation that's about the fourteen fifteen school grades. So, we're going to now talk about fifteen sixteen, since that is the current school year, and talk about the grades that we will be receiving in June of fifteen sixteen and how those components will be configured. The fifteen sixteen school grades will maintain all of the fourteen fifteen components that we have just discussed, but it will introduce learning gains into the model. So, learning gains will be included in the grades that we get this June. Senate Bill sixteen forty-two required DOE to establish a learning gain calculation that did two things. One, it required that the students scoring below grade level were growing towards grade level performance, and it requires, the second thing was, it requires that students who are already at grade level progress beyond grade level performance. So, how does a student demonstrate a learning gain in the new model? In the old model, there were three ways students could demonstrate a learning gain. They could improve one or more achievement levels from one year to the next, so move from a level one to a level two, or a level two to a level four, et cetera, and they demonstrated a learning gain in that manner. The second option was if they were a level three student, or four, or five student, and they maintained that level three, four, or five status from one year to the next, they count it as a learning gain. The third option was for students who remained in level one or level two from one year to the next, the students had to grow enough in scale score points to demonstrate a year's worth of growth in a year's worth of time. So, those were the three ways in the old model. The new statutory language in sixteen forty-two requires that Bullet Two and Bullet Three be revised. So, and then, just again, learning gains don't come into the model until fifteen sixteen. So, the next couple of slides are visual demonstrations of the proposed changes for the learning gain calculation, and Caitlin's gonna walk you through how to look at these charts and interpret the information.
Okay, this first chart is showing you the old model, so what was applicable in thirteen fourteen. The black line indicates a student who is scored in the middle of a level one range. And you see in the first box, a year's worth of growth and a year's worth of time. As previously defined, never guaranteed that a student would ever reach grade level for performance, even though a learning gain was made each year. So, as you can see, even though this theoretical student, each black square indicates that they made a learning gain, even though they made a learning gain in each year from third grade to tenth grade, they never actually got out of level one. The new rule requires that the students make advances towards proficiency.
And did they never get out of level one because we kept moving the goalpost? Or did they never get out of level one because they didn't actually learn anything?
That could be a little bit of both.
Well, I mean, when you score a touchdown, you know, you've got a hundred yards on a football field, and you know where the goal line is, right? So, but we keep moving the goal line with these level one, two, and three things, and then we try and all pretend like, oh, it's a level two. Well, no, it's not. Now, it's really what last year's level three was. It's just, and to not call it what it is and call them out for this manipulation that they're continuing to do is just insanity.
Well, that was the discussion that you and I both heard at the board meeting with the cut scores. Some of the members were saying, well, can we come back the following year and change the cut scores again? And they were saying no, which is their reasoning for setting them super high on steroids, almost unattainable, because they knew they weren't gonna revisit it again. And so, that half of their reasoning I liked, because you can't keep changing the shape of the baseball field and expect our students and teachers to relearn a new game every single year to become proficient. But, you know, I think our students are gaining in proficiency.
I think they are too. I believe that they are. But when you just use this level score as a way to determine that, to show that to parents, without explaining the manipulation that's going on behind the scenes, you're not giving a fair representation of what the students and the teachers are actually doing. I don't know.
And board members, that's gonna be good data for us to look at with the Iowa, to see how our students are doing in terms of their learning trajectory.
Well, that's a national test that's been tried and true for many, many years. And to me, that kind of information is more for our teachers to inform instruction and for our parents to really get a handle on where their student is nationally. And even locally, private schools versus public schools, I think we have a lot of great information to share that our teachers and students should be proud of. Dr. Cody?
For example, back to what you're saying, in this hypothetical student situation, it's very likely that in Seminole County, that student who was on a level one took a concordant test and did get the concordant score on a national test that proved that they were proficient. So, the expectations, as you said, Ms. Lockhart, are in the details underneath all of these conversations.
Moving forward to what the new proposed rule is. So, the law now requires, this is a law, not the rule, the law requires that when calculating learning gains, the State Board of Education required that learning growth toward achievement levels three, four, or five is demonstrated by students who score below each of those level in the prior year. So, if you look at this chart, let's look at grade three, you'll see that there's two red boxes. This is achievement level one. So, what they did is they divided achievement level one into three even boxes, and the student is the black line, the black square, that student is in box two. In grade four, in order for it to be a learning gain, the student must be in box three. And you'll see that that jump up and so forth for the remaining years. Of course, if the student does not hit box three in grade four, it would be adjusted back down. So, say, for example, the student went from box two to box two in grade five, they would be required to be in box three for learning gain to be met. So, it's a little complicated. It kind of takes a minute to think about. But for level two, they did the same thing, except they separated it into two boxes. So, for example, in grade five, the student, this hypothetical student is in box one of level two, and in grade six, they need to be in box two of level two in order to make a learning gain.
Okay, tell me what boxes you're looking at.
Okay.
Because I, is it the hash mark?
Yes, the red lines and the yellow lines without the level indicators.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Any questions about that? This is just a different visual for looking at it. So, for example, a student must move from a low level one to a mid-level one to a high level one, to a low level two to a high level two to a level three in order to continue to make learning gains. The law also now requires that level three and level four learning gains be modified because, again, they must move within their levels, so they must show growth within their level. So, this is an example of students who remain at level three or four from one year to the next. So, in order to show progress towards the next level, a student is required to improve his or her position within the level in order to demonstrate a learning gain. So, we're gonna go through two examples. You look at student one in grade three, the scale score range for grade three is three hundred to three fourteen. The scale score earned by student one is a three hundred. In grade four, the level three scale score range is three eleven to three twenty-four. Now, since this student in grade three earned the bottom, the very lowest score in level three, they are now required to earn the lowest level in grade four for level three plus one additional point. So, they must earn three twelve, because three twelve is one point above the bottom scale score range of level three in grade four. Another example of that would be student two. Same thing, grade three, level three scale score range is three hundred to three fourteen. This student earns a three oh five. In grade four, the student, in order to learn in learning gain in grade four, the student must be five points away from the lowest possible level three score in grade four plus one additional point. So, in grade three, they earned a three oh five, which is five points away from three hundred. In grade four, they must be six points away from the lowest possible level three score, which would be a three seventeen. I also have a visual representation of this because it is confusing. So, we'll look at that, and then we can discuss. So, if you look at the chart, this shows the scale score, the lowest, the red, orange, and yellow dots show the lowest bar of each of the levels. So, in grade three, the lowest level three is a three hundred. The student earns a three oh five. That's five points above the bottom. In order to earn a learning gain in grade four, that student must be five points above the bottom plus one. That's a three seventeen. From a three oh five to a three seventeen is a twelve-point scale score increase. Now, assuming the student hits their target in grade four, in grade five, the student must be six points above the bottom plus one, just seven. So, that'd be a three twenty-eight and so on. Now, of course, if the student does not hit their learning gain target, let's say, in grade four and only earns a three sixteen, the projection would readjust for every year. So, essentially, learning gains will be individualized for every student, and it will require some parent and teacher education on how these are calculated.
Well, and this could be one step forward and two steps back if you're talking about an individual student. Because really, that's what you're doing if you're resetting, if they're not making...
Well, this is just a theoretical example. As you can see, like, from grade three, they're a low level three student. By grade ten, they're a level four student. So, that's the point of this model, is that eventually, it takes the student from one achievement level to the next. And that's why it's a theoretical example. But every year, the student, whatever that student earns in that year for that test, and then their scale is set that year. So, this is just an example of the projection, but you wouldn't necessarily do this for an individual student from grade three to grade ten. Just one other caveat here. This also applies to our EOC exams. So, this is another example, just illustrating a similar thing. So, the bottom of a level three in Algebra I is a four ninety-seven. Let's say the student earns a five hundred on the test. That's three points above the bottom. So, on the geometry test, when they take it the next year, the bottom of a level four, I'm sorry, the bottom of level three is a four ninety-nine. So, the student must be three points above the bottom plus one, which is a five oh three. Now, you'll see that Algebra II, the bottom of Algebra II is quite higher than both the Algebra I and geometry, which is a concern we've discussed. So, in that next year, if the student took Algebra II, they must be four points above the bottom plus one, which is five points. They must go essentially from a five oh three to a five sixteen, because that Algebra II cut point is so much higher and more difficult than the other exams.
Dr. Cody, remind me, if you would, when we went to that DOE meeting in Orlando, Ms. Thompson, you were with me as well, and they were showing how many students they felt were probably proficient this year in Algebra II. Now, looking at these numbers, now I know what that number was. Do you remember what percentage were proficient?
Gosh, I don't.
Especially, okay, let's just take out one group. Let's say the students in poverty.
Right.
How many of those passed?
Less than twenty percent. And I think, as you look through all these models, there's a significant impact to students in poverty and minority students. So, all of these scores demonstrate far fewer proficient students when we get into students that are challenged.
And in the Alpine study that looked at whether or not the tests were valid and reliable, did they look at the Algebra II test?
No, they didn't.
Okay, so, we're increasing the cut on a test that hasn't been proven to be valid and reliable, but such high stakes.
Yes, ma'am.
And to add to that, did they even individually test items on the Algebra I exam? They tested it for validity, but they didn't individual item test the Algebra I exam. Is that true? There were certain, is that correct or no?
I'm trying to remember too. It's been a long time. I know they examined the performance of the items. They looked at Algebra I. Did they do every single item on the test? I don't recall that detail from the study.
Okay. I think we're, this is just so scary for us to sit back and look at this, knowing that, believing that these are not valid, even after the validation study, knowing that the geometry and the Algebra II are not individually item tested. Maybe the Algebra I was, don't know. We had students that came out of taking those EOCs, panicking because they're straight A students, and they came out of there saying, I only knew half of what was on that exam. There were statistics on it. Students taking Algebra II saying there was geometry on their Algebra II exam, and someone said to me, well, you don't know, maybe they were just item testing. Maybe they were just putting some things on there just to see, you know, what the higher end level students could do. Maybe they were trying to stretch. And if that's the case, if that's the game that AR and DOE are playing, then let's be honest about it, and let's tell our teachers and our students and our parents that you will see some items on this test that you are not familiar with. They are stretch items. Do not panic. I think where there has been so, such a lack of transparency in this whole process, that you look at this, and I appreciate so much that you all have gone to these lengths to come up with this for us, to have a way to visualize it. But I can't think of any words to describe how I feel about this that wouldn't be using profanity. So, I'm really, I'm stretched right now, because we even had parents that said, that had two children taking Algebra I, one that took it in middle school and one that took it in high school. One of the students got a multiple choice exam, and the other one had free response, both taking the Algebra I EOC. Now, you tell me, how in the world? That is just unconscionable. And as long as they're continuing to play games like this and not be called out on it, I don't know how we can take any of this seriously. And I know we care about our school grades. I know it's important, blah, blah, blah. But when, because, you know, our community looks at the grades, and they don't understand all of the garbage that's going on behind the scenes. But the more that we lend credence to this, I feel like the more we are saying that there's somehow something viable, and this is even, I'm just, I'm... somehow something viable, and this is even, I'm just, I'm horrified. I'm just horrified. That's all I have to say about that. I'll have more to say later.
But you brought up a good point with transparency. Because when we look at assessment, it's to inform instruction. And if we are not getting the item-by-item results of what the students did well in or poorly in, how are we to inform instruction? It's bad enough that we don't get the responses in a timely fashion, but if we're just saying, "You're proficient," or "You're not," for those students that were taking Algebra I all over again in summer school, why should they have to sit to have the whole year re-taught to them if they only are missing a certain section? But if we're not getting that response back because it's not transparent, that, to me, is a larger problem. Because then what do we end up doing? We spend our own local money to reassess these students, do we not, when they start summer school? So, again, we're giving another assessment that doesn't need to be administered. Because if we already have the information from another assessment, shame on us, we're giving more assessments at the end of the day. I don't know. This letter's going to be a lot longer than one page, I think.
The next slide, so we've just kind of finished going through the new learning gain model. Keeping in mind that there is an additional component within the model for the learning gains of your lowest 25% students. So, the methodology that we just talked about for our lowest 25, it's calculated the same way for ELA and for math. So, it applies the same methodology we discussed. Determining the lowest performing 25%, it uses the performance of the students in the prior year, calculated at each grade level, to determine the lowest performing 25% of students. Unlike in the prior model, the lowest 25 can now include proficient students. So, at some of our, in the past, in the model that we're in now, level three and four students cannot, and five students cannot be in your bottom 25. They're excluded from that calculation. Now, those students can be added back in. So, at a high-performing school that has very few level one or two students, their bottom 25 can include level three students. And just to remind, there is no penalty associated with bottom 25 learning gains like there was in the past. There used to be a letter grade penalty, but that's not associated the same way.
And just to kind of wrap up the 15-16 model, this is what we just saw before, but we're adding back in the learning gains. So, there's now learning gain components for ELA, the lowest 25 for ELA, learning gains for math, and the lowest 25 for math. Everything else should look the same as in 14-15. Middle school, the same, we're just adding back in those learning gains with a maximum component of nine. High school will have a maximum component of 10, again, just adding in those learning gains again. And district grades will also have the learning gains added back in as well.
But we're still having the lagging results in the grades.
Correct. Correct. Just to wrap up quickly, we have some new rules about school improvement ratings. So, these are for alternative schools, and this really only impacts journeys and endeavor in our school district. So, those are the only two schools that we elect to get the school improvement rating. They are allowed, they receive either one of three ratings, commendable, a significant percentage of students attending school are making learning gains, maintaining a sufficient percentage, and unsatisfactory, insufficient. Those actual numerics will be determined by the DOE, probably in 15-16, because we will not be receiving 14-15 grades, school improvement ratings, because school improvement ratings are only based on learning gains. But learning gains are calculated in the same way that they're calculated for the school Schools must assess 80% of their students receive a rating, and any school that assesses less than 90% of students are not eligible to receive a rating of commendable. Like I just said, the learning gains are calculated in the same way as school grades. Algebra students include students in Survey Two or Survey Three and that are tested. Retake assessments are included when first-time assessments are not available for a student. And then, the calculation of the rating is just the percentage of points, similar to school grade, and the State Board of Education will establish those cut points, probably in 15-16. And that's all.
Thank you very much for gathering this information, presenting it in such a professional way. I know it was no easy task. Board members, any other questions or comments to our experts?
And I also thank you for all the time and effort you've put into this. I would venture to say of the 67 school districts, the other 66 don't have the background and knowledge that you all have provided for us, and we're very grateful to you. But it's also scary to me to think that school board members around the state don't have the information they need to be writing a letter to the State Board of Education to be protesting what is being done. It's just, this is just a disaster. So, thank you for, I guess, are we going to thank them for giving us this disaster?
Don't leave yet.
For helping to explain the disaster, let's put it that way.
Mrs. Thompson, how would a community member or a board member communicate to DOE about the recommended changes?
DOE has some forms that are electronic forms that are available for the community, for community members to fill out. There are links to those on the DOE website that you can go and fill out and comment on various parts of the school ratings and grades.
And when are they due?
November the 10th is the last day to collect that information.
Oh, November 10th.
Yes.
That'd be tomorrow.
That's tomorrow.
Can we go in and hit transmit like five million times with these thoughts?
I don't think there's a limit on the number of responses that you can make.
But from the same person, there might be a limit.
I almost feel like we need to share the entire PowerPoint. Because Ms. Schaffner, you made, you made a good point. I mean, because I'm curious as to whether or not our own State Board of Education has this much in-depth knowledge. And I'd rather than just say a comment, which I, for one, I'll let the other board members chime in, but your recommendations, Ms. Thompson, that you brought through, I agree with those. And I'm glad you're representing this district with that. Should we all chime in and put that input in as well? Should we share this with other school districts around the state? Or do we need to give this background knowledge to all the state board members as well?
I think we had the opportunity to sit on a conference call with assessment and accountability directors for about 10 other districts around the state. And many of them are, they're utilizing the online forum to put forth recommendations that are consistent with the ones that we have made. Some of them have a little bit different situations regarding the number of their students that they accelerate at the middle school level and so forth that are kind of changing their recommendations. But there's a concerted effort amongst districts to have some consistent recommendations on there so that they will be recognized in the feedback process for them.
That's good.
One of the things that we've seen, as many times as we put together a list of legislative priorities or a platform or whatever, as school board members and superintendents and district staff, unfortunately, our message often falls on deaf ears at DOE. Oh, you know, it's just those school board members complaining again. What I've, what I think we've all found is they listen to parents a lot more than they listen to us. And if, if, if community members want to help us, I think communicating, whether it's emailing or finding that form, and if they're only taking comment till tomorrow, I'm not sure how much, you know, we can get that information out in the next 24 hours. But, but they obviously will still be taking comment, I would imagine, prior to their final decision-making in January. Is that correct?
I think they're scheduled to have a conversation in December, at the December meeting. That was when the additional information requested will be presented. And I think at that point, the comments and recommendations that have come are also supposed to be presented.
That will be via telephone. They're not even meeting in person.
That's correct.
But I think Ms. Lockhart, what you're saying is correct, that tomorrow is the deadline for the formal process. At the end of the day, I think any citizen can contact a state board member or an elected official to give them some concerns. Mr. Bauer, you and I have had some conversations about your concern to our community, when these grades drop, when potentially our district grade drops, when, in essence, our students probably have better performance than ever. I'm going to ask Mr. Lawrence and his department to bring some ideas to the next board meeting, which is, of course, is next week, to talk about what we can do, at least to educate our community to be prepared for what could happen. Because it's, I think there's a lot of people who, this would just go under their radar and think the grading system is the same, and then all of a sudden, your child who's been at a B school is at a D school, when we know there really has not been an educational change. But I think we have a major marketing piece that we need to be out in front of, knowing what it looks like is going to happen to our district.
Would it be a good idea with this letter that we're talking about sending, a copy go to every one of the state board members, but to send the PowerPoint with it? The only trouble is, I don't, I think you've got to have some basic knowledge of what this is all about.
Someone has to explain it.
And I'm not sure that they, that everybody would understand this without having some basic knowledge first.
Right.
What do you think?
You can always send it.
I don't think it would hurt to send it.
Well, if nothing else, it would show that it's not a knee-jerk reaction. We have professionals who've spent a lot of time and dug through the data.
Mr. Setzer?
Mr. Setzer?
I would suggest so, if for no other reason than, and I think Member Lockhart put it best. It's one thing to complain about it and to send a letter, but it's another thing to actually have some solutions and some examples. I think it's very important. They probably see that so that if for no other reason, the rest of the districts also get a chance to look at it as well, and it kind of starts the explanation. So, I would suggest you do it for sure. It's always good to have facts.
Thank you.
But getting back to the superintendent's comment, I think this needs to be two-tiered. You know, we can send the letter and try and be proactive, but we also need to be ready for the possibility that the worst may occur, and then, you know, have a plan for how we're going to deal with it. Whether that takes the form of some kind of internal assessment of our own performance, I don't know.
Dr. Griffin, how long would it take you and your team to run a simulation based on the cut scores, either with the commissioner's recommendation or what looks like the state board, if they overrule her recommendation, with a higher cut score?
24 hours.
And I think we need to, we need to see both. State recommendation, the DOE recommendation and the NAEP.
And I will say, it was my impression at the state board meeting, when, when the conversation about school grades, taking a significant dive, came up. It was dismissed by some folks on the state board that they really didn't, you know, they really didn't think it was going to be a big deal. They really didn't think scores were going to drop that dramatically. And my impression of, based on some body language and some nonverbals that I was watching, was that they may plan on manipulating those, those cut scores for those grades as well. So, they have it entirely within their control to not only set the cut scores for the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, but also to change the parameters for the school grades. And I kind of got the indication that maybe that was what they were thinking they might do, just reading between the lines, that that, knowing that that is available to them as well, and that it doesn't bode well for the governor and for economic development in the state to have a bunch of failing schools.
But I also, go ahead.
Would it be appropriate if we did our own, if we said, "This is what is likely to happen in Seminole County if those scores are not changed? This is what our school grades are going to look like?" To provide that to them? Or maybe through fads for other districts to do the same thing and say, "This is what potentially you're looking at, just so you know. The headlines are going to read, you go from an A school to a C or D school."
Well, and I think it's more powerful if we get out in front of it, rather than look like we're crying over spilled milk. Because this community, our teachers and our students are not used to not being the highest-performing school district amongst the rate.
We still may be the highest, but...
But, yeah. It depends on the cut score, though, Mr. Bauer.
Do we have, and this may take a little bit more time than, than we have, but if we wanted to grade ourselves, you know, we talk about key performance indicators in our strategic plan every year, every couple of years. If Seminole County Public Schools were going to grade ourselves and grade our own schools based on our own metrics, what would we use? How would we do that? What if we were to be super transparent on our own and say, "These are the things that we believe create an A school, a B school, a C school," and have our own grades for our schools? And be honest and transparent, where we know that there needs to be improvement, you know, we can certainly do that. But, you know, why are we relying on people who don't even live in Seminole County, who have no idea what goes on in our schools, to use bogus data to give us a label that we didn't earn?
That's right.
Is it possible for us to come up with our own fair, transparent grading system?
But I think it's going to be looked on as self-serving.
Not if you're transparent.
Well, and if we use the same metrics that we have in the past. And that's what, you know, and that's what I had talked to Dr. Griffin about, was having a counter-narrative to what's going to be out there if nothing changes.
I don't have any problem with us coming up with what, based on what we've done in the past, what our scores would be, our grades would be for our different schools. And I'd love to compare it, then, to what would happen with then FSA and NAEP. And that needs to go along with this letter and this PowerPoint presentation, too. Here's an example of what you're going to do to one of the highest-performing districts in the state of Florida. You need to think about this.
So, when the television stations come talk to Dr. Griffin, he can say, "Well, if we use the same metrics we've used in years past, this is where we would be."
But I think that's hard, too, without the stair-step of, from FCAT to FSA. So, you're making assumptions there. And then, you're making assumptions from FSA to NAEP. But if you go back to the first letter that this board sent to the state, it was all by saying, "We didn't think FSA was valid and reliable." And that seems to have left our conversation, because now we're looking at just the outcomes, rather than saying, going back to our original premise, that of garbage in, garbage out. We still don't believe in the test, but we're tying so many high-stake things to it. And I think this letter, although it was very, very well-written, I just think we're, it's, doesn't have enough teeth in it because we're accepting that it's okay to have that crosswalk into NAEP, and NAEP is not measuring Florida standards, it's measuring Common Core. And if the state DOE said, "We couldn't use SAT because it was measuring Common Core," to me, what's good for the goose is good for the gander.
And board members, if you remember, I'm thinking, before I was superintendent, so probably five years ago, six years ago, remember the Sentinel created its own scale for schools and included SAT scores, opportunities at the schools? We had, they had their own metric that we all looked like. I'm not saying that we should use that, but we could look at, I think, for our families, you know, if a school is performing above expectation according to our strategic plan, at expectation or below expectation, and focus school by school on the successes and the areas of improvement for each school, and the school grade being the secondary. As opposed, usually, we say it's an A school with, but maybe it's, you know, a school that has done this, this, and this, has met all of our expectations, is above expectation, and the state grade is a C, you know, or whatever. But I think maybe we need to build a case, and I think the principals would help because they know the successes at each school, to market each school individually. There's a, there's a lot to talk about, but we tend to make the, I mean, even on our website, the school grades are the major thing. I think this may be the year to really highlight some of those other areas that schools are doing really, really, really well. We are the number-one rated school district in STEM. That didn't happen just because of a couple of schools. That didn't happen just because of a couple of schools. We have a lot of success that I think every school could document. We have a lot of growth in a lot of areas, and I think it may be worth letting Mr. Lawrence and his team kind of wrap their arms around that and bring us some ideas of how we can really market each school on their website, to their parents, and then as well as us having some cumulative information about elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools.
So do we have a way of showing learning gains?
Well, I think we've almost complicated it a little bit this year, too, going from what we used to use to Iowa, so again, we don't have the crossover between Discovery yet and Iowa.
But Iowa will show for K through 3, it will show learning gains from a national perspective.
Okay.
So K through 3, from the spring test, K through 3 will be, will be able to get some data. The other grade levels, because we don't want to test more than we have to, depend on the state assessment. And it is problematic to try to go back and determine what was and what now is. It's two totally different sets of standards and tests. That being said, there are numerous metrics that the community values that are not included in an FSA test. And so those might be recommendations that we could bring to the board for consideration for defining who our schools are and what they do for our students.
I'm, I'm all for the marketing and getting ahead of it. The only thing that gives me pause is, I don't want to in any way lend any credibility to these grades. And, and if we, if we, in an attempt to get out ahead of it and try and stave off the impact of it, does that mean that we're saying that they're actually worth jacked idly?
I think you're just offering a counter-narrative. I don't think we need to, you know, have a knee-jerk, appear like we're having a knee-jerk reaction, like we're being defensive. But we don't, we don't think the grades are a valid representation of what our student achievement is. And I think that needs, you know, we need to be ready, if none of this works, and they just keep doing what they're doing, we need to be ready for the worst and have a counter-narrative so that when the television station and the newspaper come to us, we can say, "Listen, our students are doing, they're performing just as they always have." You know, they change, they move the goal line.
The timing is not perfect, but I think we collectively made the good decision and investment to administer the SAT district-wide in the school, because I think the community and parents understand that test, and we can compare ourselves with that administration. But that won't occur for another few months, so again, that wouldn't be getting out in front of whatever DOE chooses to release, whenever they choose to release it. But as a, as a mother, you're concerned about how your individual child is doing, and you want good feedback from the school district. And I think there's other ways, as you said, Dr. Griffin, that we can give that good feedback to our parents, other than tying it all to FSA, which this board has already made very clear that we're not confident in.
So Dr. Calderon?
We need to decide what we're going to do for tomorrow.
Right. Dr. Cody?
I understand your direction regarding a more obvious concern with NAEP, and can edit, you know, and provide it to all of you for one more review, or however many you need. And I understand about wanting it to be a little bit more aggressive, so I'll work on that.
Board members, any other comments, or Mrs. Almond, on the specific letter? Or Ally, or Alex?
I think we've done, you know, we're fighting on a couple of different issues here. I think you've done a wonderful job on the testing issue, to, to say, "This is not that we're anti-accountable, in fact, accountability is great for us because we're highly ranked." I think you need to make sure you strike the same exact tone on this issue, that it's not that you're anti, you're not for accountability. In fact, you're very much for accountability, just when it's applied properly and across the board and in the correct manner. So I think whatever you do, make sure you strike that same tone, because it's been pretty effective in the testing argument so far in Tallahassee. So I'll just keep down that path on this issue as well.
Board members, something I'd like to add to that. I think, I remember when we wrote, when FADS, we wrote the letter, the body of the letter was important, most important was that bold title. And I think we need to title this something, that's, because the vast majority of people are going to read the title and skim the letter, but something that really is a warning to what is about to happen.
You know, this is not at all unlike what the governor did with his executive order suspending the 11th grade English Language Arts test back in the spring. And I, and I, I know that the state board and DOE often likes to point to the legislature and say, "Well, you know, we can only do what the legisla, what the law tells us." But the reality is that, within this current year, the governor asked, and I'm looking to Mrs. Beeman so that she can correct me if I get this wrong, but the governor asked the commissioner to investigate the 11th grade ELA exam, and whether or not it was needed, and then it was in the scope of that whole, you know, what testing can we start to eliminate? And she came back with her recommendation, and he suspended, through executive order, the 11th grade English Language Arts exam. So I'm not so sure why we can't, in this letter, ask the state board, request an executive order from the governor, to suspend school grades for this year until a time when the legislature can act. I mean, it, what we're hearing, and I'm keep looking, I'm looking at Alex, because you're like our tie to Tallahassee here, and keeping our finger on the pulse, but what it sounds like we're hearing from our friends in the legislature is that they actually kind of are starting to understand why this is a problem, and that they may be open to fixing this for us during their legislative session, but their session doesn't begin until after school grades would have been released.
Yeah, I, I think it's probably all in the terminology. I think it has a lot to do with, you're not trying to avoid grading this year, you're trying to, for lack of a better term, I think the best term I would use is baseline. This year's grade should be a baseline that you can use for moving forward to the next year, for your learning gains, versus having grades that probably aren't exactly as accurate as, as we all think they're going to be, and probably don't reflect, and equally hurt the schools that may have improved, and then equally, you know, help the schools that may not have improved as well. So I think baseline is what we're trying to achieve, and that's the term a lot of people in Tallahassee have been using, I certainly have on your behalf, saying, "Let's just call this your baseline, and then next year we can move forward with," I mean, clearly there's a lot of other issues to work on as far as the grading goes, but at least with the learning gains being implemented, that helps as well. So I, I think that's what we're pushing for, is kind of just a baseline. And it was actually interesting, I'm going to look it up tomorrow, the fact that the, on the appeal process, you could actually do incomplete, given that was done through rulemaking process, you might, they might actually be able to do that across the board if they so are so inclined. What do they call it, incomplete or baseline? I don't know. But I'll look into that a little bit.
So would there be any, any reason to add that type of request in this letter, to ask that the governor issue an executive order to suspend school grades while we get this fixed, or until learning gains could be calculated, give, make this a baseline? I don't want to word it in a way that...
Yeah, and I'll tell you why. Because what we don't want in the letter is us basically saying, "We are just adamantly opposed to all of this," because then it looks like we're coming across this against any sort of accountability grading system. If you acknowledge that you like a sort of grading system accountability, you acknowledge you're not trying to get away from that, just in, do it in the proper manner, and then tie that to with a simple solution, a rational solution, is simply to say, "We don't really know what we have until we get the, those one-year learning gains." I think put all that in the letter. The more you do that, I think the better. You guys, you've been to Tallahassee with me recently, you see what's working and what's not, and shying away from account, or running away from accountability is certainly not something that works. When we acknowledge we want accountability and try to find a rational solution, that's when we see the best, the best results. And I think we need to make sure we do that on this letter as well.
But I, I think Vice Chairman makes a good point. Do we, in this letter, encourage DOE to ask for executive action, or is this the second letter that we send to the board, directly to the governor, saying, "We've communicated with DOE, no, the legislators, at least that we've all talked to, are very supportive of us?"
I don't, I don't think it hurts to have both. Candidly, I think you have a better shot probably of getting the governor to do something versus, I mean, we kind of, we see where DOE is at this point. I mean, I'm not saying, I'm not saying we're giving up, I'm just saying we, we know what we are. So I think both is probably a good idea.
Tell us what you're thinking.
Candid response.
So it sounds like we will do a letter to Marva Johnson, and to the governor, and we'll do it to the commissioner.
And with suggested solutions and facts to back it up, so.
And if we're sending it to Chair Johnson, I feel it really needs to be copied to all state board members, especially in that there's a new board member, and he's got a lot to catch up with before his first meeting, that they're going to be taking some very, very important action that's going to shape education in the state for years to come.
Yeah, I would also copy, and this is probably my last point, I would also copy legislative delegation, you know, probably a little bit of liberty here by saying, in all fairness to DOE, there, and I know that you like to use this excuse, but there, there is a lot of legislative pushback on both sides, so, you know, getting legislators involved. And in fact, that's where we've seen most traction, now that we're starting to see some legislators on the testing issue come to our side, that's where we're starting to see the movement. So I would include them as well.
Yeah, I agree.
Great. Where do we stand, Ms. Beeman, with this letter? I know I'm going to adjourn this meeting for a few moments to be able to segue into our next section of the board member meeting, but in order for this board to take action on that specific letter, do we have to have it typed in in front of us?
Unless you authorize the execution with the inclusion of X, Y, Z to the template that is before you. So you can authorize the execution as a board of a letter to be sent, such as the draft with the inclusion of the warning at the top, the title, the inclusion of the request regarding the, the similar action, and the inclusion of a copy of all of the, to all of the state board members. So all of the things that you want to be included, we can list that, and then author that, that letter on your behalf and send it out, as long as the board votes on it.
Board members, I think there was one other point that Dr. Cody and I were talking about, was the NAEP being aligned there. Would you want another sentence of that with a statement?
I think we have to expand on that NAEP issue, absolutely.
And I think, as Mr. Setzer said, the introductory statement reiterating that we do support accountability, I think that's...
Yep.
Was there anything else, board members, that we needed to add? Do we need to change the motion, or just by our action of adding those points, can we now vote on?
Well, and the recommendation is the draft letter, so with the inclusion of those five things.
So as the motion maker, do you want me to amend it to include the new conversation, the new points of the conversation that we've had to date?
Yes.
Okay. So I will amend my original motion based on the superintendent's recommendation to include the items that we have already catalogued in our discussion.
I'll second the amendment.
Okay. And can we vote on this new motion? Did we have to withdraw the other? Okay. Any other input, board members, comments or questions? I have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. What I'd like to do is adjourn for five minutes before we get into our next discussion. Thank you. I'd like to reconvene the school board meeting for November 9th. At this point in time, I will turn it over to Dr. Griffin for his superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair and board members. Board members, I wanted to give us an opportunity to discuss and talk about a few topics with our middle school principals and our middle school executive director, Dr. Wyndham. I know that we've all had some emails, we have, there's confusion out there in terms of what's going on with the middle school grading. I had the pleasure of meeting with the principals, they might, may not call it the pleasure, but for two, two sessions, plus they've been working on their own. And I will tell you, at the end of the day, when you sit around the table, everybody just wants to do what's right for students, and keep things simple so that we are transparent, and do the things that we need to do. And when things aren't exactly where they need to be, we're bold enough to say, "Sorry, let's make a mid-course correction and let's get this right." So there are three topics that they're going to be, I'm talking about tonight, that we've spoken about in detail. One is exactly how do we treat high school courses in middle school, to be fair? The second is, what do we do about the nine-week exams, and them currently counting 20%? And the third is looking at the quality point grading when utilizing a conversion, the conversion table. So those are the three topics, I think it's probably what we've all heard in different forms, from different parents and different community members, that the principals are going to address. They are going to be really just working us through some ideas, it's really open dialogue, board members, any, you know, any comments that we have, and then I will ultimately be bringing a recommendation to the board for a change in our student progression plan. Okay? All right, Dr. Cody?
Thank you. Board members, as Dr. Griffin said, in all sincerity, we appreciate you bringing these concerns to us, as well as our parents sharing with us, our teachers sharing with us, where there are points of frustration. Unlike other organizations, we really do want to listen and do what's best for students. So we have spent several hours as a group talking about the issues at each of our schools, and as you can well understand, they're, they're different. There are certain issues that are very troubling at some schools that may not be at others. And we thought we had to do due diligence and listen to every principal, share the concerns, and the rationale for some of the actions that were taken. So as we go through this next part of our presentation, and talk about some of the discussions that we've had, we want to say upfront that we, we know there's a need when these types of changes are made to educate, that's our job. We also know there's a need to provide an opportunity for input, and we understand that some of our students even are confused about what's happened with their grades, so they're included in that educational component as well. Dr. Wyndham is going to share the overall recommendations that we've come up with as a team, and then Mr. Schuler will talk about the high school honors course, the high school honors course waiting for middle school students. Dr. Gunderson will talk about nine-week exams and the discussions that we've had related to how they're calculated. And Mr. Durious and Ms. Abbott will talk about the middle school grading that's currently in the student progression plan. When we conclude that part of the presentation with your feedback as we're going through those topics, Dr. Wyndham will then summarize the outcome of the, of the discussion. Dr. Wyndham?
To Dr. Griffin and school board chairman and school board members, we would like to bring forth three recommended, suggested recommendations for middle school this evening. The first one is to wait high school honor courses for middle school students when they are earned in middle school. The second one is for the second semester to review, or to revisit the nine-weeks exam, moving it from 20% earned at the quarter to 10% earned at the quarter. And third is to take, move from and transition for second semester from quality point grading system to an A to F grading system. And at this time, we have four principals here tonight that will help present this information and solutions that we've come up with, and I'll begin with Mr. Schuler.
Good evening. I'd like to take a few moments to discuss why we are recommending a change to the high school honors code, honor, cour, honor, high school honors courses waiting policy. The current practice right now is not, not to allow our students at the middle school level to receive that waiting until they enter high school. We contend that our, our middle school students are taking the courses, the high school courses, and being quite successful. We contend that, that they should have the opportunity to benefit from those waiting at the middle school level, just like high schools do. So we believe that that recommendation might help in that endeavor. We, secondly, we also believe that by allowing our students to have that waiting benefit at the middle school level, it might entice or encourage more students to get involved with more advanced, more rigorous coursework. So for those reasons, we ask for you to consider this recommendation. Thank you.
And board members, judiciary information when we wait?
And board members, judiciary information, when we wait an honors class, like honors algebra one, a student who makes an A would normally be a 4.0 because it's weighted to 4.5. So, it would give an opportunity for those students who are taking that rigorous coursework at the middle school level to get the additional grade points.
Any comments or questions, board members, on this part? Okay.
Thank you for giving us this opportunity. I'm going to speak a little bit about the recommendation to move our nine-weeks exam from 20% to a 10% impact for the student. If you remember last year, that we had testing, testing, testing. And then this year, in our student progression plan, it stated that we had to do progress monitoring in our four academic areas. So, what we decided as a middle school leadership team was to merge that together and do our progress monitoring at the same time that we did our nine-weeks exam. So, that alleviated some of the testing that we did. To move to a 10% is to, we want to be that bridge between elementary school and high school. In elementary school, if they get a trimester exam, it can count up to one test grade. And we know that at the high school level, in order to take, when you take a nine-weeks exam, it's 20% of the grade. So, being the bridge in the middle, middle school, we're requesting that we reduce that to a 10%. Also, 10% would give us a better understanding of, a more accurate reflection of what the student really did learn in the course.
Questions or comments? I have one. We use progress monitoring across the district, but it is not counted towards a student grade. And I think the community would like to understand why we're using what we call a progress monitoring instrument that would actually count towards a student's grade.
And again, it was that because we shifted to a nine-week exam to be our progress monitoring tool, that we would, to be that bridge, you know, going from almost zero or one test grade to 20%.
And I'd like, and I'll just add also, it really was, I asked the schools to let's work together to figure out how to test the students less. And that was really the attempt was to, instead of having, remember we had DE last year and we had nine-week exams. So, it was to utilize something they had to take anyway, that we could also use for their nine-week grade, but also for their progress monitor.
So, I lied. I said I was going to wait to the end, but I can't. All right, so my understanding was that the reason we actually kept a percentage going toward the grade was because at one point in time, these were tied to our teacher evaluations. And we wanted the students to take them seriously. And if they thought that they were just progress monitoring and only going to be used as a formative assessment, then perhaps they wouldn't try as hard as they maybe could have. So, are we still keeping the 10% there to account for that, or was that never a consideration?
I think you're correct, that when we started this process, the standards-based assessments were part of the teacher evaluation. That was changed late in the process, that we no longer had to use those standards-based assessments. There was conversation even at several of our board meetings about students not taking DE seriously. And we know that because we saw some of the kids just, you know, click, click, click. And so, when we tried to merge progress monitoring with our nine-week exam, as Dr. Griffin said, it eliminated one exam. But when you give a nine-week exam, the student gets, the students get a grade. So, we have to count it. There probably isn't a perfect solution. We're trying to arrive at a better solution.
Okay.
In the past, when we had DE, did teachers also give nine-week exams?
Yes, in some cases, they did give nine-weeks exam. I don't think it was 100% across the board.
And I think that's, you know, in middle, all of our schools have a fair bit of autonomy in how you run your schools. And I think when, particularly when parents start to compare notes, you know, well, my child never took a nine-week exam before. Well, my child's always taken a nine-week exam at middle school. It seemed to some parents as though these were new tests, when in fact, for most of our students, they were not. So, when there isn't consistency across the board, it adds to some of the confusion, I think. So, while a lot of us saw that as a good thing, that you combined the progress monitoring with a nine-week exam, some people saw it as a new test for the first time. And in addition to that, I think one of the things that I was sold on personally on the 20% weighting was that I was told that teachers would have the ability to add questions to the exams. They could remove questions that were not covered, the course content at that point in time in the year. And then they would have the ability to curve, because at the end of the day, the intention was that no student's quarter grade was to be harmed by what was supposed to be this formative assessment. But that didn't happen across the board. So, how, why not, I guess, is my question. Why didn't that happen?
Why did they?
Why did, why were some students penalized by their nine-week exam? Was it because it was, the test wasn't curved? Was it because the test was not reviewed with enough time for the teacher to make the proper adjustments? Was it because they didn't remove questions that weren't covered? Why were some of our students not negatively impacted and others significantly negatively impacted?
Well, I think all schools, the way it was implemented was is that the teachers worked in their PLCs. And so, they were doing it in their PLCs. They had a ability.
A PLC for folks who don't know what that means.
Professional learning communities, so your math teachers and your, and so they reviewed the questions. They had the ability to provide input, to remove questions. And at the end of the day, they were able to curve the grades. So, that was the method that we used, was work through the professional learning communities for all departments.
So, my question is still, why, even if that was the case, were some students negatively impacted? And to this day, we have parents who are still trying to work with teachers and principals to correct what wasn't supposed to happen in the first place.
I think you're, again, you're correct, that it wasn't implemented consistently. I think part of that is the communication that we have to take ownership for, making sure that the information was in the teacher's hands in a timely fashion. So, it's the first time we've had this opportunity to assess students on their instructional plan at a rigorous level of standards understanding. And it didn't, it wasn't applied across the board as it should have been. As teachers work through this with their principals, they're learning, we're learning. We don't want to do harm to students. If there are cases where that was done, then yes, the appropriate conversation is at first the teacher level and of course, the administrative level, so we can correct it.
Okay, thank you.
I think Vice Chairman Lockhart made a good point, that it goes back to the teachers, right? Because they're the ones administering the test, not this board, not the administrators. Was there or will there be in the future adequate teacher training or understanding to be able to go into Ed Insight, to be able to look at those questions? You know, we, just as children aren't widgets, our teachers aren't widgets either. And we know everybody comes to us with different strengths and gifts.
You know, our teachers were very excited. We did ours all computer-based. Our teachers were very excited because that information was available to them immediately. And our teachers jumped in and really started to pull that data apart. But as far as the county-wide, with the support of our PD, our professional development department and our teachers on assignment, we have offered lots of training to our teachers. And we will continue to do that at our schools individually and district-wide. Eileen Haney has come out and provided our sixth grade to seventh grade and eighth grade social studies teachers with document-based question training, which is very rigorous type of an activity that our students do on our social studies program. We have literacy and math cadre, where our teachers get together. And sometimes they have consultants in there and sometimes it's in-house with our TOAs, our teachers on assignment. And they work out what is the best strategies to get to this rigorous level that's built into these standards that our teachers are now faced with. We have Algebra Consortium, our GEMS math program, just put together their very own PLC. And then, of course, this summer, you know, we had the Power of You, which was a beginning of rolling out this rigorous training to our teachers.
Thanks. Any other questions, board members? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak about the grading system. A little bit of history, in the last school year, 1415, we had an option to select from three grading models across the district and secondary. And it was, it was left, thank you, it was left up to the schools to determine which model they would use. We found in the middle schools, within our schools, we might have groups using different models, different departments using one model and another department using another model. And then across the schools, we might have different models. We know that in the middle school, we are very attuned to reducing variance and being a unified group. So, we looked at the models we were using. We always want to make sure we're looking at student learning as well. And as a group, we decided to go to the quality point model to reduce the variance along those lines. As we look back and reflect on what has transpired over this nine weeks, we see that the crosswalk in the quality point model, trying to take the percentages to points, is confusing. We know that it's, it could be impacting to students and to parents. And we've done some reflection to focus on student learning and to remove that confusion. So, we would like to propose the A through F grading system, which is a straight zero to four grading system. And in looking at this system, what it does is it provides similar grade steps between zero, one, two, three, and four. So, the students have a similar division between all of those grades. If you were to look at the percentage, I know that the percentage is what we're accustomed to when we work with percents. And if we look at percents, a student has an opportunity, has 59 opportunities to make an F. They have 41 opportunities to pass, and 10 of those opportunities, they can get an A. So, with the A to F, zero, one, two, three, four, we are reducing that. We are bringing them into similar steps between each of those grading pieces. And we are focusing on reducing the variance within the middle schools. And we are focusing on student learning and student mastery of the concepts as we move through that, giving them an opportunity that if they, if they have a bad experience at the beginning of a nine weeks, they can redeem themselves and show that they've mastered the content as they move through the nine weeks, and it won't penalize them for the entire nine weeks.
Good evening. Just to recap very quickly what Mrs. Abbott said in relation to the A to F scale that we're proposing and taking into consideration the information provided by our parents and our students and our teachers as well. The first thing is that, you know, we want to provide a grading model that reduces variance among our teachers. And in addition, that provides a more accurate reflection of our students' knowledge over a given period of time. I believe each of you has been provided with a document that is an example progress report. And I think we may be able to reflect it on the screen as well, perhaps? All right, so there on the screen is an example of a progress detail report. And this is an example of a report that teachers have the ability to generate in Skyward, to provide to parents through family access. What we've done is we've tried to provide an example to identify some of the important components of the report that helps parents and students to understand a student's progress in the class. The first item there, item A, is what we consider the letter grade and then the corresponding grade average, or here's referred to as a score. So, you see a 2.31. If you go down to the next item, item B, item B identifies the assignment categories. And in this particular course, the categories are the assignment category, which can include tests and quizzes that are given during a nine-week grading period, the exam, the 20% that we've referred to now that we proposed to move to 10%. And then, in this case, a homework category for a student of 10%. Each of these categories is weighted and contributes to the student overall grade. And so, those are the items identified in B. If you go down to item C, these are examples of a student's assignments and the student's earned points in letter grade associated with each of those assignments. I do want to point out, and we'll kind of come back up to this, if you scroll down, or at least on your pages, if you go, there's a second page. This information can be, again, adjusted by the individual teacher to provide as much or as little detail to parents as possible when they're sending out these grade reports. So, if we can go back to the report here, we'll look at item D. One of the things that we'd like to recommend in addition to the change from, to the A to F scale is providing parents with this scale, the grading scale there at the bottom of the grade report, identifying both the letter grade, percent range, and the GPA value associated with the corresponding values there. We believe that, along with the information provided in item A, the range or value that the student earned as an average, in this case, example, it is 2.31, will help parents and students to understand where a student falls within a given range, which was a concern proposed to us by our parents. A couple of other things that I wanted to identify as additional benefits are, in this proposal, there will be no need for a conversion chart. It's no longer needed for the purposes of providing student grades. It's no longer needed for teachers to input grades. And with that, we hope provides teachers with more time to plan for instruction, because it reduces the amount of time that a teacher might be required to convert a grade. In addition, teachers can email these reports. Prior to our proposal, in the current grading model, teachers cannot email reports. So, they are provided the opportunity to do so with this. And then finally, as I've stated already, the reports provide greater detail to students and parents, given the opportunities that the teacher wants to provide information as identified on the page below this page.
Questions, board members? I haven't a lot to, go ahead.
I think it's important that, you know, we, the quality point idea is not anything that was ever formally presented to this board before implementation. And I think that's something that we need to be honest about. Because in my conversation with parents and teachers repeatedly, they ask me, why did you do this? And there was a gentleman this evening, one of his questions was, how did we get here and why did you all do this? Well, we asked the same thing. So, this is the time that this is being presented, why did we do this? And that's not to throw anybody under the bus, because I know you all did it with the best intentions. And I really do believe that this concept is what's best for our students. I really do. I think it's great. How we went about it and how we got here is another conversation for another time. But I'm happy to own the things that I do that are unpleasant and unhappy, but I don't really want to own stuff that I didn't do. So, I'm just going to put that out there. But I do want to understand it and I do want to support you with the changes that are being proposed, because I think the main concept is a good one. What I'm still a little leery of is the implementation and the communication piece of this. We have teachers who for 20 years, some of them, have been grading on a zero to 100 scale, and that's what they know. We had a very hard time just saying, don't let the nine-week exams negatively affect our students. And that didn't happen real well. So, we're still working on that. So, how, what's the plan for communicating this now that we're here?
And that was what I was going to speak to, is to ensure the consistency, we would work together to devise a education and communication plan. It would start with us creating, and that's why we said second semester to a to allow us to educate all the stakeholders. It will be, it will look the same, it will come from this middle school group. It will roll out the same way at every school, so that there is no gaps. So, we'll work together for that, as well as communication. There will be a communication process that rolls out to the SAC, to the PTSA, because the goal is to ensure that our teachers, our administrators, our students, our parents are able to speak to how students are being graded and assessed. And so, we would really work to make sure that that's rolled out with those specifics.
Ms. Lockhart, I'd also like to add, I've asked the principals to ensure that all their students can calculate this. This is simple enough to, it's a few minutes, to make sure the students understand exactly how their grades are being calculated. There are middle school students, this, this is not complicated math. And it does mitigate, the biggest issue that, that I've had parents discuss with me are the students and the conversion chart, who, when they went from the quality point conversion to the percentage, the percent was showing like ninety point three and, and that. This would mitigate that because for every ninety to one hundred, the teacher would input an A, a four. Eighty-eight, nine, and every example that we work, it earns in favor of the students, and there's not going to be opportunities to are against the students.
If we could pause one second, Ms. Solomon has a comment.
Thank you, Dr. Calderon. It's evident that the administrators really listened and really heard what the parents were saying and probably what some of the teachers were saying. And they made the necessary changes so as not to penalize the students. And I appreciate that, as well as the time-saving for the teachers. And thank you for taking my comment.
Thank you, Ms. Solomon. Anything else, board members, before we get to my quick questions? Mr. Bauer?
I, I had to consult with council, but the, the board did approve the progression plans of which this format we're chang- changing now. We did approve that, or this board did approve it. We may not have been communicated to properly, as to what we were approving. But I, we did, I, because I, I was like, "How, how could that be policy without board approval?"
The, the chart was included. But there wasn't any descriptors as to, and, and I will be honest with you, the four-three-two-one, I thought, was in calculating a GPA.
And, and that's where, shame on me, that when I read through the progression plan to vote on it, I was looking at it through the eyes, since I have older children of college eyes. And that's what you're doing in college, you're getting a four point oh, a three, three point five. I, I think this is more honest, more transparent, and better for the students. And that's what we're supposed to be here, is what's better for the students. You know, we have all probably talked to many parents about this and responded to many emails. And I feel the quality points, if we choose to not go down that path any longer, I understand why we did it for some of our lower-level students, especially in middle school years. You know, we want to have those kids hang in there, and we don't want to disenfranchise them if they're on the lower level. But we also have a lot of gifted students and a lot of straight-A students. And I think it erred against that population. And we talk about individualized instruction, and I know we all care about all students, as we know you all care about all students. So, I have to applaud you for rolling up your sleeves and coming up with a solution that I feel is best for all students, especially our AB students. Because I think those are most of the parents that I heard from, quite frankly. I didn't get phone calls from straight-F student parents.
No, I didn't either.
And, and I was one of those moms, when you have, you know, gifted children, that they're very competitive and they want to do what's right. So, here's a scenario. If I am a straight-A student going into my nine-week exams, and I bomb it and I get an F, what would be my letter grade for that nine weeks?
You would have a four, because you're a straight-A student. That count says ninety percent, so it's a three point six. If you got zero points on your ten, in your nine-weeks exam, you would still have a three point six, which equivalent to an A.
So, you're holding harmless those children who had that bad day. And I think that's where we had most of the opportunities, were those children on the cusp. Because I know one discussion I had with a gentleman, he, he said, you know, a student had seventeen As, two Bs, and then the one C dropped him down to a B. And statistically, because I love math, and I was trying to do the data, and it, it wasn't working for me. But based on the scenario I just gave you, Dr. Gunderson, I think it would be more acceptable and be more honest with the reflection of the students' work for that nine weeks. But I want to go back to Dr. Windham, one of your comments that when Vice Chairman Lockhart talked about rolling out, and you said, "Next semester."
Yes.
My concern, especially since some of these courses are high school in nature, I'd hate to go through another nine-week exam not airing in favor of the student, so you actually have a full semester of old information, when it is a high school letter grade that's going to go on their permanent high school transcript for college admission. Is there not a way we could err on the side of the students this semester?
Yes, we've been working with the assessment department with Ms. Thompson, and we are looking at changing that. So, the principals now will be able to see the test, will be able to work with the teachers. And so, I think we're going to, we will work together to put a plan in place to educate our teachers prior to that, so that we won't hold students harmless for that. I mean, they won't be penalized for it. But if we do it now, we will wait until the second semester, so that we can roll out the education and the communication plan, because teachers really need to have input. So, we wanted to talk to teachers and everybody. But we will work together as a middle school unit to make sure we're consistent with that as well. Because I think a part of that was the consistency piece. So, we will have a plan of action to make sure that we're rolling it out.
So, this current nine weeks that we are living through currently, is that test going to count for ten percent?
Yeah.
Or twenty percent?
Twenty percent, but we've worked with the accountability department, and the way that we are rolling it out is a little bit more consistent. I think the first time, teachers, and, and we will be working with our teachers when we're talking about the curving, we will make sure that that is consistent across the board because there were gaps, there will be no gaps. We'll do that as a middle school group together. But it will still be twenty percent. I don't think we'll change it until second semester.
Is that right, Carol? Sherry?
I knew you'd wind up up here.
Yeah.
That's why we had the extra chair.
The, the problem is not with actually changing it in the gradebook. We can make it a second-term change instead of a second semester change with the ten percent. But the problem is that it's in the student progression plan as twenty percent. And there's a certain timeframe that has, the process that you all have to go through in order to make that change, to make it legal.
Can we make it retroactive?
Ms. Beaman?
Does Skyward have the capability to do that? Yes, but I think once a grade is posted, it's, um, it, it can't be changed, basically.
Oh, they're changing grades now.
Right, but there's a criteria, there's a process to, to changing grades also, which it can be done. I'm not saying it can't be done, but there is a legal process that we go through to change a grade.
Ms. Beaman, could a motion be made tonight to start that window timeframe ticking?
Well, it's, it's rulemaking. And so, there's been a notice that the, that there may be changes to the progression plan. The, the plan was to come to you all, if there was consensus here, with permission to advertise at the next board meeting. And then, by January, we would have gone through all of the time requirements, where we have to have our, our proposed rule language out there for the community to then come back for final approval.
And there's no way to speed that? I mean, I know that's our normal process, but don't we have a way to do something more quickly in a circumstance like this, that would just address one piece of this people progression plan and then come back and do the whole thing later on? I mean, it just seems to me like we, we, we need to be able to get out of our own way.
Because tonight was an emergency board meeting. And just because we have certain calendared board meetings with the holidays interfering, I don't.
We only have one meeting in November.
It was a, it's a special school board meeting.
Special.
And the changing of our various metrics, I don't believe constitutes an emergency or an emergency rule. And so, we would have to work through the regular process in order to change the rule, which is the, the progression plan as a whole.
But could that be solved if we added another board meeting? Because we have less board meetings in the November, December timeframe due to the holidays. And I think, I don't want to speak for the rest of you, but I think we'd be willing to do whatever it takes to, to support our students and the great works of the middle schoolers. I'd hate for us to slow them down.
Ms. Beaman, what would happen if we took a short break and I came back with a recommendation this evening? How would that speed up?
We don't have all of the text that we can then publish, which is what is normally put before the board for permission to advertise.
Well, we didn't have all of the text when it came before us in a box the last time.
I think, I think what the chairman is asking is if it was necess, if there's any way the process could be expedited by us having an additional meeting? Or is this just dates? It's got to be a week for this, two weeks for that?
Well, we do have to have the, the proposed language out there for a certain period of time. And when we, you know, looked at it from, moving from the seventeenth, even if we had a special board meeting to approve, I'm not, we wouldn't get it done before January, when we return back.
Is it thirty days we have to?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-eight after the, the advertisement.
So, a, a teacher, just, I want to make sure I understand this. So, a teacher currently, like tomorrow, if they wanted to go into Skyward and start using the zero to four scale with whole numbers instead of decimals, could go in and start entering that tomorrow without any change in our progression plan? Physically possible and legally possible, because that's how it appears in the chart.
Correct.
The hiccup is this ten percent. Is that what I'm understa, that's the only hiccup?
The language is explicitly spelled out in the, the progression plan, that is twenty percent. And so, that's what.
But if that's the only thing that we're, that we're modifying, I don't know what type of language needs to be drafted. The language is already drafted, we're just replacing the twenty percent with a ten percent.
Well, as, if all of the recommendations that the middle school principals are proposing, it wouldn't just be that one portion. It would also be the portion that talks about the weighting. It would also be the, the changing of the chart that's on, I think, the current page, thirty-eight. There's a number of different details to the progression plan that would, would have to be advertised.
Ms. Beaman, just trying to get this to work. I already authorized IT, IS, to, that would, teachers' grades are not going to be due until January?
Fifth.
Fifth. Okay, we're, I held for a week, the day after that board meeting, couldn't, and the board approved the changes. Would that be?
The day after the board meeting, and what, what's the date that you're looking, January?
January twelfth is the board meeting, and I issue, parents have to understand, report cards are going to be coming out a week later than we planned. But it would give us the opportunity to drop that nine-week exam for the second nine weeks down to ten percent.
Well, Dr. Griffin, I'm, I'm certainly, important members, I'm certainly willing to look at that. However, I think that the current policy at the time that the students take the test says that the test is worth twenty percent. And so, you take a, a test, and you hold just the input of that test grade into the, the system until you change your policy, but that policy is for.
When the kids take the test.
Correct. But I, I'm certainly willing to, to dig in and to provide any avenue to see how we can expedite it. But just based on what we've been discussing and the timeframes that we have, I'm not seeing where we can change it prior to the students taking the nine-weeks test because it's a policy that has to go through the, the process.
I have a calendar in front of me, so I'm trying to count backwards. When's our first nine-week exam administered? What date? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I, I believe the window's December seventh through December eighteenth for the second semester, second quarter.
And Dr. Cody, you have language drafted already for the student progression plan?
Yes, sir, in anticipation of the discussion, I started to work on that.
Because twenty-eight days prior to that window, seven, fourteen, twenty-one, twenty-eight, is the sixteenth.
Well, and I, and it's twenty-eight days after we advertise it and put it out there, so it wouldn't necessarily happen on the seventeenth. We'd have to also get it out and, and published. And I believe the earliest that we were looking at is that it could be in the paper on the twentieth, if I'm not mistaken. Ms. Maraymons?
When this comes before the board on the seventeenth for permission to advertise, the, the soonest I can get it in the paper, which is the Sentinel, which is a two-day turnaround ad, is Friday the twentieth. And then, starting on Friday the twentieth, you count twenty-eight days. Not counting the day of the meeting.
Ms. Beaman, just for my clarification, if we have the text, why could I not make a recommendation this evening?
This is an information item that you, that was being discussed. More information, it's not noticed, and.
Okay.
Can we not, can, can, okay, so, this is where the creative part, I know, drives you insane. Can I make a motion to modify the agenda to add an action item to our agenda this evening? Then it would be agended.
Well, it is on the agenda.
Well, I mean, to make it an action item.
In an effort to have the information out there for the public, as, as contemplated, I think, by statute, to have an, an action item with text that we don't have before us on an, an issue that was added to the addendum to a special school board meeting as an information piece, I think would not be as transparent as what this board has and always wants to be with this public.
And we want to do all three at the same time, too. We want it all.
Must be another month to the calendar or something.
I, I just, okay, so, there's got to be a solution to this. Because, you know, it's not like we're trying to do something sneakily in the dark of night that is going to be hurting our students. We're trying to make a change that is going to help them, that our community has been begging us to please implement.
But it may not help all students.
Well, I think it will. I think it absolutely will help all students. We, we already know that, that, that this quality point scale helps our lower-perform, performing students. What was, I think, not aware, not made apparent to us at the time was how it could negatively impact our top-performing students. So, the principals have now identified a way to mitigate that. It now is fair across the board, it helps all students, low and higher performing, our mid-fliers. And we want to make it, we, we want to fix it and make it right. And so, I don't understand how, I, I guess I just don't understand why we can't make it right, right now.
Right now.
Or even before the end of the quarter. I mean, we're talking, it's, you know, it's a month away, for goodness.
Well, I would be willing to let Ms. Beaman research this and see if there's any way. But the law is the law. And so.
You are no fun.
We pay her really well, and she gives us great advice. And if she tells us it can't be done, then I'm confident it can't be done. But if, if she can find a way that it can be done.
And if it includes calling a special board meeting, I'm for that, too.
Absolutely.
But let's give her a chance to maybe research it and see if we can come up with something. Because I think you understand the intent.
Correct. Correct.
So, it, just to clarify, so, for future reference, if one of the board members wanted to add an item to the agenda on the fly that was an action item, would that or would that not be permissible?
Well, our policy speaks to the, the chairman and the superintendent creating the agenda, and then for additional items, for, for it to go to the addendum. So, the chairman and superintendent create the agenda for the school board meetings and for addendum items that they come, and the board votes to have the addendum items heard at the board meeting. So, and I, I want to be. So, and I want to be clear, Ms. Lockhart, because I understand what you're saying is that, are you kind of locked in right now? And our practice has always been that for rulemaking, that when we notice that there's likely or there will be a change or that there's something that's being proposed, we put that out there. That's already happened. That notice has gone out that there are potential changes for the student progression plan. Because of the urgency of the issue, I believe that the team and the superintendent wanted to get this before you as soon as possible, there was a request to add it as an addendum item for information here today. And so, it would not, I would not recommend to you to add text to preliminarily approve that text to the public without having that information readily available to the public based on a discussion that was advertised on our agenda as an information item. And I do, I understand the frustration. And it may be that we have to call a special board meeting to see if we can get it expedited. But based on where we are right now, I would not recommend that.
So, we should have made it as an action item instead of an information item?
Well, I think that the superintendent and the team wanted to have that discussion as soon as possible and saw the opportunity at the special board meeting to come and have that discussion and get your feedback so that they can move forward as quickly as possible and bring back to you, based upon your feedback here today, the next step.
So, my takeaway from this is that maybe in the future, we need to just go ahead and make things like this an action item. And then if the board chooses not to act, then that's okay, we can always punt. But I think we've, you know, we've boxed ourselves in here and it's, you know, through no fault of any of yours, just, we just need to be more cognizant of that, I guess.
I think-
Well, I think if they had known that there might be action, they would have done it.
Oh, I think they knew there was action coming.
I don't know that they did when it was advertised.
Well, I mean, Dr. Cody already started drafting the language for Pete's sake. She, I mean, let's face it, everybody knows we're happy about this.
But really, I was planning on bringing the language, as I am, on the 17th. We knew we had this opportunity, so I wanted to have, let the board engage in some discussion about it. Ms. Beeman, one last try.
No. I was going to say-
I hate to do this during a board meeting, yeah. Could I make my recommendation, when I'm allowed to make it, so that it's retroactive for the second nine weeks?
I wondered about that. But I don't know that that's possible because we're here.
And you can, and maybe you can get back with us, but that may be a-
And I'll have that information before or on the 17th as to whether, I think there's a possibility of that being challenged.
Well, I would hope that on the 17th or earlier, that we could be as aggressive as possible with the agenda and action items. Because it's kind of like hurry up and wait. And policies are a great thing, and that's what we, how we govern, but this has kind of backed us into a corner, and we need to come out with-
We don't want to do it the wrong way. We have established a way that we change policy. And, well, I think we're all in agreement here, and I think it's an issue about that aspect of it. We've got a common goal, of course. But I don't know if we've got that to work.
I know you've spent many hours in meetings and talking to teachers and parents as we have. What pushback, if any, do you have with these anticipated changes?
I don't think we've discussed, discussed that particular question when we were discussing the recommendations. I don't think any, and we had all the principals in the room. I don't recall negative consequences for these decisions.
I think the question is, I meant to begin with, do you think your teachers are going to be receptive to this idea, getting rid of the conversion, I think we have a teacher sitting back there telling us, yes, I said, getting rid of the conversion chart, moving to 43210, and then the communication piece, of course, with our students and our parents and our community?
Ms. Beeman, I know you've got us so tied to this agenda now. If the other board members agree, could we have a second public comment, just because we are so transparent? There might be some parents now that they've heard some of the solutions that might wish to speak. Are we allowed to do that?
Yes, at the time that the agenda for, let's say, the 17th, the text of the proposed changes-
I'm talking about tonight.
Oh, absolutely.
Board members, would you be willing to allow public input? If anybody in the public, teachers, staff, parents, would like to address the board again, if you could just fill out a form real quick and bring it up to the clerk? And we'll ask some more of our questions, and I'd be happy to hear from you. If you've already filled it out, Madam Clerk, do they need a second form?
Well, yeah, because it's a different topic.
Okay. Board members, do you have additional questions? Because I have a few others. Okay. I'll ask a totally off-topic question, if it's okay, board members. How, in this, it almost seems too simple. So, how would something like extra credit be addressed?
Sure. Extra credit.
Yeah. Oh, extra credit in this, change to this new system would be entered as an additional assignment that the child would get bonus points on over and above, as opposed to adding it to the actual grade. Because if you add it to the 4.0 grade, make it a 4.5, it's still going to take it down to a 4.0 because that's what we've told the grade book to do. So, it'd be entered as an additional assignment, not on top of an existing assignment. But it can be, it can be done.
Okay, so, let me explain. But I understand, then, if you're saying it automatically takes a 4.5 and moves it down to a 4.0, is that same thing going to happen for our students that have the high school credit class where they get the extra half point?
No, that's a different, that's a different issue because we're talking about grades in a grade book and GPA.
Got it.
So, the GPA being weighted does actually calculate in the 4.5.
Dr. Cody?
A reminder, thank you, Dr. Blazewitz, that in the student progression plan, there was, depending on how you read some of the language, it was a bit conflicting in that middle school students who are enrolled in high school credit courses shall be graded in accordance with the high school stipulations. So, just because lesson learned that we need to be very explicit when we're talking about changes to the student progression plan. So, for high school regular courses and for high school honors courses that are conducted at the middle school, it's still 20% of the quarter grade because that's the high school model, and these are high school courses. For high school honors courses, there is the additional .5 weighting. And now that will be at the middle school, as well as it'll carry over when they get to the high school. But we just, again, we want to be very clear and transparent on what this means. So, the high school courses is still 20%.
I'm sure you just aren't turning me off up there. My light keeps going out.
Oh, you know what? If anybody on your table shuts your mic off, it mutes us as well. So, you need to keep them on.
Oh, that's what it is.
I saw someone down there is muting you.
I saw Dr. Cody.
No. That's what I didn't do.
So, for clarification, for parents who are listening to this discussion and they're hearing that we're talking about changing the progression plan to being 10%, to those nine-week assessments being 10%, that would only apply if your student is not taking a high school-level course. If they're taking Algebra I, or Geometry, or Biology, those will still count for 20% because it is a high school course.
Yes.
Okay.
Some foreign language classes.
And some foreign language classes. Okay.
And what?
And some foreign language classes. Okay.
Hi, Leah.
Okay, we're-
Karen, I think is trying to say something.
Ms. Almond? No, she said she agreed, she wanted to hear a public comment as well.
Oh, okay.
At this point in time, I'd like to call Tracy Olson and then Lisa Donovan.
Thank you for opening it up to us. One of my questions is, is the current system that we have in place penalizes those students in middle school who take a high school-level course in that it's a 3.5 to 4.0 scale. So, if we're not going to look to changes till the second semester, how are we going to address that for the first semester for these children who are taking high school-level courses, who may have scored a 90 in that class and now have a B on their transcript? That's one issue. The other thing, this is beautiful, but it requires a teacher to send it. Teachers are not 100% consistent with using Skyword and other systems in place. So, how do we guarantee that we're going to be able to see this? It still doesn't tell me if my son scored a, if he gets a 4.0, did he get a 90 or did he get 100? It's still not telling me where he lands. So, when he goes to take that nine-weeks exam, how is he supposed to know what he truly needs to score in order to maintain that grade? The other thing, why are we giving a 20% score to a PMA when our DE testing wasn't used that way previously? Now, we're taking a PAM and we're adding 20% to their nine-weeks exam? And I don't think that this was shown in a clear and transparent way to the parents. We didn't get grades in our children's Skyword accounts for the first six weeks. So, then when they took their nine-weeks exams, which was 20% of their grade, their grades were affected by this. And now we can't go back and relook at that. We're going to change something for second semester, but we're still penalizing these students first semester. Thank you. Thank you.
So, can we ask our team to address each of those issues? Because I think some of them, I definitely want clarification on, and I think some of them we have a fix for. Is that, Dr. Griffin, do you want to?
Okay, I'm going to begin with, I'm just, sure, I'm going to ask you for a couple of these, I want to make sure. The first, the one issue I want to address right out the box is not knowing where they are, the students are, in terms of percent, how many extra points they need. When we record a 4.0 for, it's anything between 90 and 100. So, they get, it's, instead of the conversion chart where a student maybe who made the 91 got a 3. whatever, they get the highest possible anyway. So, all you would have to do to calculate what they need on their next exam is whether they need the A, the B, the C, the D, or the F. So, you would, so you wouldn't have to worry about, you almost have to forget about percent, it's that simple, and just figure out what numeric grade they would need to maintain the A.
So, it airs in favor of the student. Instead of saying you'd need a 96%, really, you just, worst case, you need a 90%.
So, percents are gone.
That's bumping you up to the 100%.
Does that make sense? Okay, good. How are we going to address, team, we spoke a little bit about this, how are we going to address the high school credits? They will, at the end of the year, is when they get their credit, they would get the weighted credit at the end of the year on their transcript. So, it will be weighted at the end of the year when they would get it anyway.
The first semester grade, if it's a B-
You have to be on a microphone because we're being recorded and transmitted. Sorry.
And I understand that, but at the first semester, if we end up with an 89.9B under this current system, they have a B for that semester on their transcript that goes to high school, under our current system right now.
If they have an 89 point?
If they have a 90.33, if they have a 92, because right now, that scale is 3.5 to 4.0. So, a 90 is an A in a high school-level class at the high school. It is not in a middle school class. That's really a high school-level class. So, like, my son in Geometry, if he gets a 90 for the semester, he will have a B on his transcript. My daughter could take the same class in high school and end up with an A.
With an A.
So, here's my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but that is able to be corrected in this second quarter because that is at the teacher's discretion to convert to those, to those whole numbers at this point. Is that correct? That that problem that she's just identified really could go away immediately without this board taking action because it certainly went into place without this board taking action?
Can I make, can I make a comment?
Yes.
I want to make sure I'm hearing you correctly. If I'm hearing you correctly, I think that you believe those percentages are going to go into the grade book, or the teacher's going to look at the percentage and bring it to a, whatever that conversion was on the chart. If I heard Dr. Griffin correctly, that 90, whatever, if they got it on test, if the teacher's converting a percentage to a point, that 90 would go in as an A, would go in as four points. That 90 is an A, it's four points.
For first semester?
But not for first semester.
This is the issue.
This is a legal question.
First semester.
It's the policy we have in place when the-
But the policy we have in place does not dictate anything having to do with this conversion chart. That conversion chart is nowhere in policy. The board did not take action on that conversion chart. That's something that they implemented on their own. What's in the progression policy is the 43210. So, therefore, they could immediately start using that as it was intended to be used and as we intend it to be used, starting this second quarter. There's no reason why we need to be tied to a conversion chart that this board never approved. It's not a part of policy.
But if it's in the pupil progression-
It is not in the pupil progression plan.
What is?
I happened to pull it up.
It is on, I don't know if we can pull it up, it's on page 39 of the current progression plan. And I think what Member Lockhart is referencing is that, that there's a section in there that says grade ranges, which, based on some feedback from certain folks, is believed to be the conversion chart that was actually stretched out and provided to the community. But what Member Lockhart is saying is that it actually doesn't, it's not the exact same conversion chart that has been published on the website with all of the individual points outlined. And my concern is that if we want to be clear, that that should likely, that should be taken out. That's the recommendation that I am hearing from the team is that what you will see will not be, for example, under secondary grading, to letter grade equals quality points. That won't be there in the proposal that's coming from the team and the recommendation of the superintendent. That range, the grade ranges, that column won't be there. The quality point label won't be there. It will be GPA value, to be clear as to, A, what is being input into the system, and B, what that value means under the statute. There's not going to be that quality point column at all, if I'm understanding the recommendation. And so, here, for number two, the letter grade equals quality points, gone. Grade range column, gone. Quality points, gone. And those are, as well as number three, the remaining 20, where it talks about the nine-weeks grade, that will also be gone. And my concern is that those are, they're clarifying in a lot of ways to the community, but they are substantive changes to what was adopted by the board back when this progression plan was before, was before you.
With all due respect, though, I'm reading it differently. Because I feel- Because I feel that what we would be doing here is just deleting the column of grade ranges because the quality points truly is what we're now going to be calling GPA value. So we're not changing any value. We're changing a title of a column. And you don't see any of those titles on a student's report card or grade. You're still having a 4 equal an A, which is 90 through 100. You're still having 3 be a B, 2 C, 1 D, 0 F. The only thing is, is the grade ranges, meaning the teachers don't have to sit there with their conversion chart. So we're not changing the policy. We're just changing the input method for the teachers, making it A easier and B fairer for the students. We're not changing any percentage range, letter grade, or the quality points. We can call them quality points all we want and come back and change policy to GPA value, but it's not substantive, it's not any way changing the grade.
But you are still making changes to a student progression plan that we had voted on. And, you know, I understand what we're all trying to do because I agree with you, but I can't in good conscience make changes to a progression plan without following the policy that we have for making changes in the progression plan. And if you look at number three there, it says about the 20% will be on the nine week exam.
That I agree with. We have to change that in policy, the 20% to the 10. But whether we call it a quality point or GPA value to your end of sharing, whether it would be your son or your daughter, I don't know, on a 90, on the older version, the 90 would come out, as you said, as a B. Whereas if we were truly just using the 4-3-2-1-0, it would be an A.
But you look up there, right above the chart, it says letter grade equals quality points.
Right. Which actually goes right back to my point, which is that what's actually written says if the letter grade equals the quality points, then the grade ranges are just there for whatever reason because there's no conversion chart included with the plan. So we're not changing the plan. We're just, our teachers are actually going to be able to implement it without something that wasn't originally included in the plan. You see what I'm saying? They're current, they've added something, they've added a step in their process that isn't in this plan. So by them removing that step of that process, they're actually more in compliance with what's written here than what they're doing now. And we're not changing anything.
I still think you need to do it the right way.
Well, I guess we'll have to disagree on what the right way is because...
Well, I'm willing to let our counsel tell us what the right way is from a legal perspective.
That is...
Don't tell us what we want to hear. Tell us what we need to hear.
Well, and I haven't, apparently. And I am, my counsel, both to the superintendent and to the board, it's been the same, is that if part of the rollout and the conversion chart that was posted after this change, I think is, is making it not clear. And if we are being clear, and what is being proposed is to just take the language directly from the statute. Grade A equals 90% through 100% has a grade point average value of four and is defined as outstanding progress. There are no discussion of quality points because we're taking A, 90, 100 with a grade point value of four. That's what's being included in the, in the grade book and out comes the student's grade. If that is the recommendation and that's the will of the board, it is my counsel that we need to make the policy clear and erase any confusion. It is this board's position that this policy clearly states that. I'm happy to defend that.
Okay. To try to keep ourselves out of legal hot water, here's another potential solution. I want to hold harmless any child for the first semester that grade could have been convoluted in some other way. Could we add an additional paragraph in our pupil progression plan this year when this comes back for new adoption to come in to say, for this calendar year only and only for the first semester, we have the ability to, lack of a better term, you know, retroactively correct any incorrect grade assigned for the first semester?
And Chairman, that is part of the research that I will do. But I think also, even if, for example, it comes back, you know, retro on a policy, we can add to the policy that we look at any of the, can I say, the cusp kids to, and look at those kids after the second semester to address. And it wouldn't be retro. It would be prospective. It would be after the second semester and the policy has changed to then go back and look at any of the cusp kids prior to the final grade being provided. And so that's some language that we may have to work on, but that we can, I think, get to where you all want to go and not penalizing kids for the entire grade by maybe adding some language. I know then we'll have to think about the one, only the one semester classes and so forth. But I think those are all things that the team needs to come back to you in the proposed language to address all of those issues that you all are discussing.
Well, I thought that one of the... I thought what was presented to us just a little bit ago was that a teacher has the ability to start using whole numbers without decimals in their grade book immediately.
That is correct.
Okay, but you're still, but now the attorney is saying that our student progression plan prohibits that from happening. Is that what I'm hearing?
No.
I mean, the teachers can do that. I don't know, you know, there's no legal impact on that, I don't believe. The teachers don't have to put in a decimal value. They can put in 4-3-2-1-0 without changing our current system.
You can't be doing everything the same. You can't have one teacher in a school doing one thing and another teacher doing, that isn't right. That's not fair to kids.
Or they do it that way in high school.
I'm sorry. I'm saying that you can't have one teacher doing one way and another teacher across the hall doing another or across the county. That's not fair to kids. It's not fair to teachers either.
Well, I don't disagree with that premise, but it's happening now.
But we're trying to straighten this out because it's wrong and we all know that.
Right. But we, so, okay, I'm going to go back to my original question. If all of the teachers wanted to start implementing whole numbers of 0 through 4 tomorrow, they have the ability in Skyward, but the only thing preventing them from doing that is the pupil progression plan. Is that correct?
Well, if the question is can they physically do it, then yes. I think that they physically can use 4-3-2-1.
Right.
If, what you're asking is, under this plan and the conversion chart that has been published pursuant to this, is that if a student gets not, let's say, a 94, there is a conversion that they should be putting in there under what is currently there today as opposed to what would after second semester be simply a 4. And so physically they can, but if they're, if they are complying with the conversion chart that has been published, then that would be inaccurate.
Even though the conversion chart and all of that was never, is not a part of this plan?
And if that is the position of the board, is that that was not approved and not published, then all of the grades then can be changed at this point. Because what you're saying is that it wasn't authorized, correct?
In the nicest way possible, yes. That's what I'm saying.
And if that is this board's position, then I, I understand.
That's my position. I'm not going to say that's this board's position. You know, I've learned a long time ago not to speak for this board because I tend to march to the beat of my own drum.
Well, I'd like, I'd like to have counsel tell us whether this board approved. From a legal perspective, did we approve the progression plan?
Yes, we did. We voted.
You approved the student progression plan, but the conversion chart was never presented to us. I think going back to your question.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
That we can look at the grades that were on the cusp. We're certainly take a look at the high school courses first to make sure that the students that were on the cusp, the students that are 89.5 on up, to make sure that if they wound up with a B that they get, that we work with the teachers to make sure that they get the A. Because we want, we do want the same courses moving on to high school to have the same grade they would have gotten at the high school or the middle school. And we, I already did one run, because remember team, when I looked at the 3.4? So we already did a run and I know all classes, the number was not that high. So I don't think, I think there's not that, that many students. So it's well worth going through to look at each one individually.
Well, I think that leads into the holding harmless on the exam. If the student had 13 As, 2 Bs, and got a C, that student ended up with a B. And that B in the conversion chart was a 90.33. So they're sitting with a B.
And that would come out, when we did a run for the numbers, the students on the cusp, that would be, that would be, anybody who would be 89.5 or higher would come out as being on the cusp who did not get the A.
See, even with involved parents, we have a lot of communication, right? But we appreciate your input.
And then my only other question was about the PAM, including that. We included PAM as 20% of their grade when we didn't previously use DE testing as their grade. And I understand wanting the students to realize that it's important. And you can tell them you're giving them a grade, but how do they know? I mean, at the end of the day, we, I think we penalize some of our students by giving, by adding PAM in.
And that's why the middle school principals labored over that and dropped it to 10%.
But it's not, but we're still not going back and looking at that first nine weeks where it did affect. It could have affected that score.
Well, and that's where I was going to ask for clarification from our principals because again, it is my understanding that all of the grades, that teachers, that we looked, now, maybe this is wrong, maybe this is a misconception on my part, that we looked teacher by teacher at each class at the average and figured out how these nine week exams were dealt with in each class so that we knew where students were affected and where they weren't. Maybe that's a misconception on my part.
Is there difference in how teachers across the district, and I guess you could just say your own campus, treated it? Did all teachers know and actively go through and drop out questions that in their opinion were statistically invalid? Did they add questions and did they curve the scores?
I think teachers had that opportunity to go through, review all their questions based on the question analysis that was provided. They were given the opportunity to delete questions that perhaps they never got to cover in their IP. And then they were, they were allowed to curve the test. But I can't answer that 100% across the board teachers did that.
What we're hearing is that that did not happen across the board.
You're hearing that from parents or teachers?
Both. We're hearing from parents and teachers. Teachers who said that they were not aware that they could do that. Teachers who said that, for whatever reason, they, their experience is different than what you're telling us. You hoped their experience would be. And so when you have a parent that says this isn't what happened and a teacher that says, yeah, this isn't what happened, I'm thinking in some cases it didn't happen. No, that's not what we want.
No, we don't want that very much.
But, so since it has happened, the last people that we need to have be caught in the crosshairs between an adult miscommunication are our students. So we need to figure out how to fix that. And so I was thinking that we had gone back and we had checked all of our classes to run through all of these nine week exams to check for disparity and discrepancy so that we didn't, so that the only students who had their grades corrected weren't just those with engaged parents. Because I guarantee you, the majority of students out there don't have parents who are engaged to some of these folks who are here tonight advocating for their students. So if we have a whole mess of kids whose parents aren't looking at their grades and aren't aware and aren't engaged in this discussion, what are we doing as a school district to go through and check all of those grades to make sure that we got it right or that we can fix what we didn't get right? And I think that's the piece that these parents are wanting to hear is, okay, we get it, we're fixing it for next time, but what do we do retroactively? And so far, I'm not really hearing that piece.
But I think, isn't Mrs. Beaman going to look into?
That's for the policy. I mean, these are kids who even during the first quarter didn't, either didn't have their tests curved for whatever reason, either their teacher didn't want to, didn't know they could, whatever. Or the rigor of the tests was so excessive that the teachers really couldn't even tell whether or not their students learned what they taught because the items that were on it weren't... And that's, again, was it because the teachers didn't know they could add question and take questions away? I don't know. But it happened. I mean, we sit up here and we get told what's supposed to happen, but then you hear, well, no, what actually happened was. So, okay, now how do we fix that for those kids? Still from the first quarter.
Can we hear from the other parents who want to speak?
Can I just say one final thing to add to what you said, Ms. Lockhart? I'm going to look at my son's PMA for English tomorrow. That Scantron has not one X on it. I don't know what his score is. It changed three times in Skyward. So I'm physically going tomorrow to try to figure out what he even missed on this and how he got a D on an exam that then showed up as a C because he got a B on the teacher exam. So those are the questions that we as parents have, is we don't understand. So if I'm looking at a Scantron that has no marks, how'd he get a D on it?
And I think the principals have to. Dr. Cody?
Well, there's an item analysis report that we shared with the board that would be able to, would allow the teacher to share the information by question.
Thank you. Lisa Donovan and then George Helm, please.
Okay, thank you for letting me revisit the podium. Without the details for a moment, my concerns are as follows. One, a vote was made on an item that the board did not understand by their own admittance. That, I'm not really sure how that's now a valid part of policy. If everyone was under the assumption this was a GPA and that's what they voted on, I think there's a whole issue to be revisited, which is why we implemented this to begin with and what the intent was. If the intent, as you stated, was to represent kids with a 59 or below and give them another chance, a much easier way to deal with that because you had a bad grade once is, you know, maybe you drop the bad grade or you do a curve on the worst test. But to change it for everyone because, you know, there's a bad grade once early in the semester is problematic for all the reasons we're discussing today. So I feel like there was never a discussion of why this was happening and we're all just agreeing, let's fix an incorrect unintended implementation with another implementation that doesn't necessarily result in a better outcome. So we've all kind of nodded our heads and said, oh, yay, quality points, let's go to this 4.0 scale. But I actually think there are some fundamental problems with this new approach still. And I'm not clear, we're, I've heard from a few of you, no, no more percents, but then we're still talking about percents and we're still talking about 89.5s. And you had a great point, Mrs. Beaman. You said in the state, I think statute or something, it's just the percentage range up there, you get your letter grade and eventually it's a GPA, which I think is what you all thought you were voting on. And to me, it just seems like, I don't, I just fundamentally... And to me, it just seems like, I don't, I just fundamentally don't understand why we went this way to begin with. So, before we even get onto all these details, it doesn't seem like the board ever evaluated whether that was appropriate to do. That being said, if, you know, we're sort of in this jam, my concern is that, even with this four-point-oh new scale, it still doesn't work, because how are you grading? What are you using for points in your test? What are you saying, like, "Oh, that looks good, I guess it's a four," but there's some basis, some numeric basis for that, that you're calculating that four off of, and I don't know how you're doing that. I don't understand how you're doing that. I don't understand how a child figures out where they are, and I don't understand how I then instruct in my house where we need to focus our efforts. So, I still think it's very unclear, and I don't think it gets us to a solution that's equitable. The last piece that I'll say is, I still believe very strongly that you cannot grade differently across different schools, the same class. So, if it's a high school class, it needs to be excluded from this whole mess completely, and just stick with how you do the high school grading for those. Just like you're saying, you're going to allow a twenty percent weighting on the one, you should be able to make changes for high school courses for these.
Thank you so much. George Helm and then Michelle Smith, please.
Good evening, thanks again. Do I need to give my address again? Okay, I'm going to give you an example of why the converting to, actually, the whole numbers may actually even create more problems. You have a, a system now where actually they're converting it, and they're trying to equalize a high B by giving something more than a three-point-oh. But I'm going to give you an example. If you have four tests or four parts of your grade, you get four eighty-nines. You're thinking you're going into that final, you've got twenty percent left, you're saying, "Wow, if I kick butt on that final, I can still get an A." But if they convert those four eighty-nines to threes, okay, you've got twelve points. You get a four on the final, you've got sixteen. Divide that by five, you get three-point-two. That's a B, okay? You get a hundred on that final, four eighty-nines and a hundred, four-hundred-and-fifty-six points. Divide that by five, ninety-one point two, it's an A. So, there's still problems. There's going to be problems anytime along the border. Same problem happens if you take, get four seventy-nines, and you get an, and you get an eighty-nine on the final. You're still going to end up with a C. Or, so you're going to be, have the same problem, because you're not going to get enough, you don't get credit for the high A. You don't get credit for the high B, and that's a problem. So, you're going to have that problem every time when you're, you know, switching from, to this four-point-oh scale. It just doesn't work. So, if you, if you, anything, you're going to have to, there's got to be a different way to do it. And it takes the incentive away. And my kid was one of those kids. Okay, she's going to graduate from Lake Brantley, probably fifteen in her class, straight one B, and her one B was like an eighty-eight point whatever. And she had a lot of times going into the final, get, had an eighty-nine, said, "You know what, Don, I'm going to kick butt on the final." And every time, she'd get a hundred or ninety-eight or whatever to bring that grade up. Can't do that anymore. It's a problem.
Thank you, I appreciate. Michelle Smith. And then Eric Oberson, please.
Thank you for letting us express our concerns. And I think at this point, I'm probably echoing what everyone else has said, but, you know, one of the questions that I had, Lisa brought up as well, is how can the vote even be valid if when you guys were voting on the student progression plan, you were under the assumption that you were voting on GPA rather than quality points? To me, if you're, if you think you're voting on one thing and it's actually something different, the vote is not valid. Okay, number one. Number two, with the grade range, I understand what you're saying regarding the percentages, how the percentages really aren't that important. But they really are that important, because for my child, if my child gets a ninety-one versus a ninety-nine, it tells me that more effort needs to be focused in that class. Or if they get a sixty-one versus a sixty-nine, you know, whatever it is, you know if they need to focus more effort or if they're on track. It's a big, I mean, a nine-point spread is a big point, is that, it's a big spread as far as learning goes. And it, it's deeper than just the grade, it goes towards the comprehension as well. One thing you said is that teachers may make adjustments to this, which I appreciate, but I think the key word is they may make adjustments. You're not saying they're required to make adjustments.
No, I don't think they're required to. Just for clarification, my understanding was this was a requirement, just to clarify.
Okay, that's good, because I wrote down "may" and I underlined it, because someone here said they may make adjustments. And again, a "may" doesn't cut it, because you could have one kid whose teacher does and another kid whose teacher does not. So, it's just, you know, there's no equity there if that's the case. And then the last is the, the report that the teachers can send to the parents. I think all of us would appreciate that. Again, I know it's not something that's required, but also, if you take a look back at that report as it was shown to us, it's pretty confusing. And although, you know, maybe most of us sitting in this room can understand it, I think if you're looking at the parents of our lowest quartile students, it could be very, very difficult to understand. There's a lot of calculations that go into it. And if you just go back to the straight percentage, it's a lot more meaningful and a lot easier for everyone across the board to understand, I think.
Thank you so very much. Eric Oberson and then Brian Dorman, please.
Okay, thanks again, and I reiterate what everyone else has said. I don't have a presentation to share with you this time, unfortunately. But I, I do want to say, I mean, I'm not coming here just as a parent concerned about my student, my, my daughter. She's, she may not be a cusp student, but, but I was more concerned about what I saw and what I heard other people concerned about, and the confusion, and I think maybe the poor consideration of how something could be implemented and then how it, how, what the implications are, as you, as you asked, Mr. Chairman. What have you thought about? How, how could this fail? And I don't think you're thinking about that enough. And I, I think you're doing it again. And I, I think by going to this simple proposal to, to simplify the, the quality points, the, the ranges down to the numbers, gives you the same thing, because you're going to have to round the same way. An A is going to be a three-point-five to a four. A B is going to be a two-point-five to a three-point-five. You're going to have the same problem that you had before with the quality point system with this, with this recent proposal. So, I, I think going back to percentages is the safe way to go. Otherwise, you're going to be, I'll be back here at the next vote, giving you the simulations of, of your new proposed grading method and show you the shortcomings of it. So, I think that was, that was it.
Thank you so much. And Brian Dorman, please.
My name is Brian Dorman, and it's my first time up here, so my address is 445 Twisting Pine Circle in Longwood. I think I might be one of the few teachers in the room tonight to hear the implementation of the quality points, four-point scale. And to address the comment that came earlier about how easily this would be implemented in the classroom. And I understand the concern about variance across county. But if administration puts out the message that we can implement this, it can be done tomorrow. It just would have to wait, teachers would have to wait from, for their administration to make that. So, that's my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you for teaching. Mr. Carnes, could you come forward, please? From a teacher's standpoint, are teachers able to change grades?
Yes, teachers are able, able to change grades. Once, once they're posted, it is in, in school board policy for dot five-one governs the grade change process. And so, they have to submit to the principal, the grade change, the rationale for the grade change. It's based on, I don't have the policy in, in front of me, but it's based on one of three reasons, a mistake. I can't, I can't think what, but the policy talks about the three reasons for doing it. They submit it to the principal, the principal approves the grade change, and then there's a record kept of the grade change with the students', academic record.
Thank you, Mr. Carnes.
Mr. Carnes, how about administrators changing teachers' grades?
Once grades are posted, administrators can only change grades at the behest of the teacher, or if there was something that, that came about that fits within those, those reasons as identified in the policy.
Dr. Wyndham, you stated in your earlier part of the discussion that middle school was the bridge between elementary and high school. We've all had children go through, most of us, elementary, middle, high. Talk to me, maybe Dr. Cody, about how are high school students in Seminole County Public Schools graded?
As you know, the high schools have the choice of the three models. So, I'll ask Dr. Blaisewitz, he's the expert, to explain the three that are used.
First, just a few seconds of, of history as to why they have three models. Before, there was nothing in policy that said, that, that indicated how a teacher should arrive at a grade. And this was not necessarily a problem before we, before we processed grades electronically and opened our grade books through Skyward and other mechanisms to parents. But when those things happened, we saw that some teachers throughout the district, very few, we called them outliers, had created grading systems that were really quite difficult to understand or defend. And so, we, we narrowed the field to the three most commonly used methods that teachers used for grading. And, and those three are the, the ones that are in place in high school now. One of them is not the quality point that, that you see up on the board, but the A through F approach with, with grade point values. So, that's the used in our high schools. Total points are used in our high schools, so each assignment, test, quiz, whatever, project is worth a certain number of points, and they earn a certain number of points related to that, easily converted to a percentage and, and then calculated. And then there's the eighty-twenty, which is eighty percent assignments, which would include test, homework, quizzes, and projects, and twenty percent the nine-weeks exam. That's, that is the most commonly used grading system in high school, but it's certainly not the only one. There are three that are used.
Thank you. Board members, other questions?
I want to ask about the nine-week assessments and the tests themselves with, I've, I've heard from quite a few parents their frustration that the students were not able to review the, the exams after the tests were given. The teachers actually told students, "Sorry, can't see it, don't have it, already shredded it." That, that's a very common theme that I'm hearing. The idea behind these exams, I was told, I think we all thought, that these are, because these are formative assessments and they were supposed to be used for progress monitoring, that of course, the whole intention behind them was to then go back and review, so that there would be an opportunity for students to use these to learn what maybe they didn't already know. So, again, we, I, I just, I'm trying to understand, there was a parent here earlier tonight, and I believe she's already left, because she had younger children with her, but she is one of the parents that told me that, you know, I, teacher said she'd love to go over it with me, but she didn't have it anymore, she shredded it, and didn't go over it with the kids, because she felt that that was not part of the protocol to review. So, help me with that one. How are we going to fix that?
Well, the exams are all still available on EdInsight, so they're there to go over the, and I, I see why there was confusion. There were, there was an option to do paper-based exams as well, and yes, people were asked to shred the copies of the paper-based exams, because you don't want exams laying around. We're not sure which questions will be used again. We have to do our own district item analysis as well. So, those exams are still available. As you saw in the EdInsight reports, options, you can see what questions were answered by each student. You can see the standard that was addressed. So, all of that is, is still there. So, again, it's back to, I think, Ms. Lockhart, the communication that we have to improve to our teachers and, and to make sure that there's a common understanding of the options they have available.
Okay. So, when, so for the parent that has a Scantron, you're telling me that in EdInsight, that teacher can pull the questions that will correlate to that Scantron?
Correct, and the responses.
Okay. So, I don't know where your child goes to school, but perhaps it would be good for that parent to go ahead and email the principal and let them know that that's their expectation, that they will be able to see the questions? Because I, I think there's, you know, we, we're kind of playing this game of telephone here, and I, I mean, I'm not out in the trenches to know where it's falling apart. But I, I, you know, when a, when a parent goes to sit down with the teacher and says, "I want to see the test," and the teacher says, "Well, I don't have the test anymore," that parent comes away and believes that their teacher has to know, right? So, they don't then bother to follow up with the principal, because who else would know better than the teacher? So, instead, they post on my Facebook page, which is great.
Yes.
I love that. I love having that communication. But I would love it much better if we just had that great teacher, principal, parent thing going on, because that's where it needs to be happening.
We understand.
And I guess, follow-up to that, isn't EdInsight, but there was one comment made earlier this evening about Skyward. And I thought we had standards district-wide of teachers posting into Skyward. And when I hear that there was nothing posted for six weeks, that brings concern, because we say all the time up here that it takes the entire community, the entire village, and I think we're disenfranchising, perhaps, if that is the truth, part of our village. And it's not our role, as we know, we don't micromanage you all. We know you're phenomenal leaders, but when we hear repetition from more than one source, we have to question. So, again, I don't, I don't want to live in the past, I want to focus on the future and look for solutions. So, how can we work collaboratively to do what's best for kids? Because that's the question we ask ourselves before every vote we take, is what's right for the children? So, just based on that, I'd love any of your ad hoc input. I mean, is that acceptable as you, as a leader in the school, to have teachers not post anything in Skyward for almost the entire first nine weeks?
I believe that happened, because we did not have our, the process in place as far as the grading buckets. And it was, it was in the August meeting Sherry came, and then, then we had to have time for our ETFs to set up our grading sk, system. So, you know, anywhere from fifty to a hundred and twenty teachers, and that took additional time. And I just sit here and I think about the timeline we have ahead of us. Oh, I didn't know if you were, January twelfth or whenever that school board is, that means we wouldn't be able to put grades in for the first couple of weeks in the second semester.
Ms. May, can I add to that?
It is, it is true that it takes time for the ETFs to get the Skyward grade book set up. There was some confusion at the beginning of this year, so it could have been a situation where a teacher here and there did not have their grade book set up properly. I don't believe it's the policy to wait six weeks to put in grades. I think that that might be more of an isolated situation than an, than an overall problem. If we do wait till the January twelfth school board meeting, then we would delay the opening of the grade books until the decision is finalized, so that they, because we, we can't open the grade book, you know, on January fourth and then change it on January twelfth, because that does affect the grades that have already been put in. So, we would have to delay the opening of the grade book.
Well, we've learned a lot of lessons tonight. Well, we've learned a lot of lessons tonight. Dr. Griffin, do you have any recommendations at this point in time?
Next Tuesday is a board meeting. I'm going to bring a recommendation forward. I would like, just want to comment on, you know, the grading, the grading issue is a philosophical one. You know, the, we've all grown up, I grew up in generations of percentile. I had some teachers who just graded us A, B, C, D, F, and there are, Mr. Helms, I believe, if I'm saying it right, his example is correct. You know, if you happen to have four 89s, you get 100, but I could also show you if you have four 90s and get an 80, you wind up with a B, you know? So, it's, it's, you know, there's ways to make, to show the numbers either way. I think we have to make a decision on what seems to be fairest for all of our children and bring that forward. But I do think we have some discussions, some decisions that the middle school principals can work on with Dr. Wyndham and Dr. Cody. What do we do at the point of decision with, we don't want any child negatively impacted by, from the first nine weeks or the second nine weeks. So, I think we have, we have an obligation to take a look, say we're sorry and fix if something is not right. And we're not talking thousands of students because I ran the numbers when I was trying to drop it down to 3.4 to see what happened when I was first surprised that there was a problem. So, I'll bring a recommendation next week. I think we have a lot to talk about and we'll take it from there. I think, I think I'm hearing from the board, you're pretty comfortable with the 10% for the nine-week exams. Bigger issue with the exams is how, how are we, how are students learning from those exams or for any test? If they, they get something wrong, they need to know what they got wrong and they need to be re-taught, and that's what it's all about. You know, a lot of the conversation is about the numbers, but we're not talking enough about the learning, and we have to make sure, you know, we always focus on that. I think we, I know we have an obligation to our students who are taking those rigorous high school courses in middle school, let's give them the same GPA opportunity that the students have at high school. And I think the big, I think the biggest part is going to be us, you know, really working with our principals and the schools and communicating. I've asked, Dr. Harper already has it set up, that when important information has to go out regarding grading and that type of information to assist the principals, it goes to the principals and to the middle school teachers so that in their PLCs, they have the same information. But it's, at the end, end of the day, it's about doing what's right for students, and there's a few different ways to do it, but I, I know, I know that we'll get this right. I know the conversion chart caused a lot of confusion. I didn't know about the conversion chart, I just knew about the, you know, what was written there. And in all honesty, the conversion chart was done with the best of intentions. You know, that was actually developed by some of our teachers, you know, to try to, to try to be fair, but the conversion chart, trying to line that up with a percentile is, it's not a linear activity. It's, you can't get it to work out, we wind up always manipulating it. So, I think this board's big decision is for middle school, do we want to go to an A, B, C, D, F system, or do we want to stick with a percentile system? And if that was the decision, that would be all effective second semester. I think we've made a lot of progress, and I think our teachers understand, they've been into this now for nine weeks, 12 weeks, whatever, and they understand the value of the A, B, C, D, F system. I think most people can relate to it, but you're always going to have somebody who can come up and show, any system we have, it can always show you, you know, how it does or it does not work. I think the advantage of the A, B, C, D, F is that it prevents the ultra highs and ultra lows from changing everything. But regardless of what the grade is, when I hear a parent say they don't know what their child's percent is, you know, we need to make sure that students are bringing home work, the work is graded, that work is being shared, because that is very frustrating as a parent if you don't know exactly where your child is. So, I think we have a lot to think about between now and next Tuesday. But I appreciate you really listening to the principals and the parents, and I know you've responded to a lot of email and questions, and I think us bringing the conversion chart up, I think that's the root cause of a lot of the confusion, and I think removing the conversion chart regardless of what the final decision is, is pulling the confusion out of it.
Any other comments or questions, board members?
I just want to thank the parents who have brought all this to our attention, have emailed us, have shown up for our meetings, et cetera. Thank you for doing that. And principals, thank you for the time and effort that you've put into this as well. Appreciate it.
And Mr. Dorman?
Dr. Calderon, I have a comment?
Yes, member.
In the end, I, regardless of what we select, I'd like to know that it accurately reflects its true ability. That's it.
Thank you. Member Bauer, anything further?
I didn't have a comment other than to say, I remember when I was in high school, going into a final exam saying, I need an A, or I need this to get this. And I, the problem is, and you know this, being a mathematician, Dr. Griffin, that any system is not going to hold some students, if they're on the cusp, somebody's going to fall on both sides. And there's just no way where you can have a grading system that assesses students where there's not going to be students based on what the assessment is that are going to fall on both sides. It's impossible.
Anything else? Thank you so much for your time and all the research you did to get to this point. We truly appreciate it. We just want to work on what's right for kids together. Seeing no further business to come before this board, this meeting starts.